Good evening and welcome to the Common Council Meeting Housing and Committee Development Committee. I said committee two times, but it's Monday, November 17th today. I'm joined by Councilmember Kimbrough, Councilwoman Zamer, and I'm your Chair Derrick Johnson. Today, we will be speaking about budgets set aside for housing-related activities, and we will start with public comment.
First, can we have Julia Long speak? You can come up right here, and I'll turn on your mic.
So, good evening. I was here before, I'm gonna say the same thing. Oh, can you hear me? How's that? Okay. So, good evening, esteemed legislators and neighbors. My name is Julia Long, an Albany resident, and I am the founder and executive director of the Alternative to Economic and Housing Displacement, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization serving tenants as well as small landlords in Albany City Housing Court. The people I help in Albany Housing Court are tenants as well as small landlords who cannot afford to pay me. Most people find themselves in housing court due to their non-payment of rent. Therefore, they depend on the generosity of my neighbors for support. Small landlords who struggle to pay their mortgages, pay taxes, and other obligations, even when tenants fail to pay rent. These folks are also people who I help. So first, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing around housing. I know it's not easy, and I appreciate you. To this end, I'm here to offer assistance in your efforts to address Albany housing crisis. To popcorn on various housing initiatives, quite simply, our neighbors need you. I need you, the city of Albany residents, almost seventy percent of whom are renters need you. As a black woman business owner, federal cuts to diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, as well as cuts from Housing, Urban and Development, HUD, and most recently SNAP, have hurt the services I provide to small landlord's tenants in the city of Albany, the majority of whom are either black women head of households, most of whom have school-aged children under their care, and many are caring for their elderly parents as well. The housing crisis can't wait. As the winter solstice approaches, so too is the increasing number of evictions. Statistics show that almost ninety percent of those facing evictions, whose cases are calendared in housing court, and if they have legal assistance to inform them of their rights as tenants, they remain housed. Let me repeat that. Almost ninety percent of families, mostly black women and children facing eviction, kept their homes, remained housed when they had legal assistance. And when people stay housed, they are not a burden on city taxpayers who would otherwise have to pay to house them in city shelters. There is money set aside for vacancy study that wasn't studied, so I'm asking, I'm not asking for new money. I understand in these tough economic times, as legislators, sometimes you have to borrow from Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, and I applaud your efforts. But this time, I'm here to ask for funding because your, before your budget is enacted, I'm sorry. The money is already there, and I'm not asking for all of it, because I know there are other organizations, like United Tenants behind me, who do this work as well, so I'm not here to be greedy. The work that my organization does saves tax dollars while saving our residents from homelessness. Let me help you close the gap in Albany's housing crisis. So, thank you for your work, and I really appreciate you all, and have a good evening.
And next, we have Canyon Ryan.
Good evening. I'm here to really just echo what Ms. Long spoke about today, or just a moment ago. When we fought for this money after the housing vacancy study determined that there was not a sufficient vacancy rate for the city to opt into rent stabilization, at the time, we were advocating for $125,000 to be set aside so that the city could redo the vacancy study if it was so inclined to do. And after careful consideration, the council decided that that was not the direction that they wanted to go with this money, and so they set it aside for a housing initiative. And that housing initiative, well, we think what makes the most sense is for this money to go to tenants in the city of Albany who are at risk of eviction due to their low-income status, due to neglect of their property, due to an eviction proceeding, et cetera. The United Tenants of Albany has about $650,000 that have been impacted by federal HUD cuts, pauses, or grants that were just unofficially terminated, including money that is owed back to the organization due to a City of Albany and HUD substantial amendment from last October that still hasn't been resolved. So, $120,000 that was expended as contracted and expected and never repaid due to the way that HUD is managing the City of Albany contract. In addition to that, $100,000 has been held up and been prevented from being able to save tenants' housing, because we have no expectation of when or if we're ever going to be repaid by HUD for the HomeSS money. So, there is a very clear issue here where HUD is cutting back programs. We saw that they intend to reduce the permanent supportive housing budget by two-thirds, in addition to the already existing problems, in addition to carving out or essentially obliterating the Fair Housing Department at HUD. So, there is no better opportunity or moment to capitalize on with this funding than to support the tenants that the federal government is clearly neglecting and turning its back on. And what we know is that the City of Albany's Common Council has always stood with tenants, for tenants, and defended tenants' rights, and really led the way and trailblazed unten protections. And now is a really good opportunity for the City of Albany to directly invest in the community-based organizations that are supporting these tenants, and also, more importantly, the tenants themselves that are at risk of eviction due to no fault of their own other than substantial HUD cuts. So, we would love to see this money broken up into pots that are, you know, spread wide so that no single organization is capitalizing on this funding, but that the need gets to all the organizations that are supporting tenants, and therefore, all the tenants that are coming to our organizations. And just to leave you with one final stat, this year, UTA has distributed over $450,000 to support 315 low-income tenants at risk of eviction or to secure new housing, in addition to supporting over 450 tenants across the county, but at least 375 here in the city of Albany. And our walk-in office has received ten percent more walk-in traffic this year than last year in just the eleven months that we've already been through. So, over 1,200 walk-ins have come through our office of people seeking assistance, which has just been really kind of sad. So, really excited for this opportunity and thank Chair Johnson for holding this committee meeting. Thank you.
So, at this time, I would also like to recognize that we have, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just one more public comment. Tim Sarver.
Hi. Tim Sarver, also new to United Tenants. The HUD cuts have been devastating, I think, for tenants and for our organization as well. We are still fighting to help them as much as we can, and I'm here just because I think that our organization and the other organizations that are fighting for tenants need to show up to help where we can. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak on this and just emphasize and underscore the dire situation that tenants are facing. Things are getting harder. Things have already been hard for tenants as rent costs are continuing to climb. Whatever assistance we can be to tenants to keep people housed, we'd like to provide that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Again, I would like to recognize our council staff. We have Robert Winter, our counsel. We also have Bryant Jimenez, our legislative director, and we are joined by Carly Johnson, our junior legislative aide. At this point, I want to open up the mic to our committee members if they have anything to say.
I don't have anything, any questions or comments.
So, I just would like to say thank you to our speakers, just because it's through public comment that brought us to this meeting, because it's important that we don't let this money go back to the general fund. It was intended on housing. And, you know, when I listen to you all speak, it's been many times in my life that UTA has played a part in me being able to make it through the situation that I was dealing with. And it's important that, you know, I carry those experiences everywhere with me, because a lot of us are one payment, one check away from being in a similar situation. So, with all that's going on in the world, it just made a lot of sense when I, when it was brought to my attention about this money, and I would like to do everything that I can as the chair to try to make this make sense, you know, make it, do the best that it can do to help as many people as it can. So, I don't know where it goes from here, but I definitely want to make sure that we had a conversation and to give committee members a chance to put their head on this and see how we can, you know, assist the people that are assisting people that need help. And we know that that number is not going to get any smaller. And I would like to also say that we're joined by committee member Sergio Adams, as well as Councilman Tom Hoey. So, I would like to reopen the floor up, even though Councilman Adams just came in. I know that he has something to offer this conversation. Sorry to throw you right in like that, but we're gonna move this along.
Yes. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to share a few comments in regards to the discussion on budget and housing. I understand that this is a tough budget cycle for the city and for many of us councilmembers who are trying to find ways to alleviate the burden from taxpayers, while we're all aware of the housing issues that go on around the city, from big developers down to small landlords, but also to the inequalities that exist when it comes to maintenance and care of these properties. Would love to see a budget that reflects a much stronger housing initiative that pushes for more housing options for individuals in need, but also focusing on that working-class population to find alternative housing. When we talk about homeownership, there's a huge discussion on trying to assist young homeowners or first-time homebuyers with the financial resources to be able to get their first home. But with the data and things, the market of how things are, most homeowners and people who own property are holding on to their homes, making it very difficult for young people and families to get their first home. But as I mentioned earlier, with this budget, I would love to see a much stronger emphasis on some of those housing needs. I believe it's our goal to continue to really push for those with our intent memo and working with our finance committee and this upcoming administration to really push and bolster some of the initiatives that we have discussed over the last few years here in this council in addressing the housing concerns for many people in the city of Albany. So, just wanted to thank the Chair for being able to have this conversation and for other committee members joining the conversation, because, again, this requires a lot of attention and dedication to make sure that we're striving to hit these goals for our residents. So, thank you, and I'm hoping that this evening's council meeting and budget session, again, allows people to understand what's in the future and what's possible, and understanding that with this hopefully incoming administration, that our council will still continue to push those strong housing initiatives that residents want to see. So, thank you.
Again, thank you. We're also joined by Councilman Alfredo Ballerin, and I wanted to open up the floor to Mr. Hoey, if he had any comments.
Yeah, I came in late, but I agree with the Councilmember Adams that we gotta come up with a way to make homeownership affordable to young families, new people coming into the city. We do attract people through the universities and colleges in the area. They come up to Albany, they like it, they want to live here, but they can't afford to live here, so we need to do something. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, I wanted to open up the floor to counsel and Ballerin, if he had anything to offer.
Thank you, Chair. I apologize that I am a little bit behind. I appreciate you having a meeting here today. I think part of the discussion is to try to focus on some of the resources that we put together last year on housing. Is that correct? And I appreciate the committee members and everyone here and all those that have come out to look at some options. I think there's some good actions that we should look at, including trying to find ways to fill some gaps where the federal government is creating holes. So, I look forward to hearing those conversations and be a part of it in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I just want to point out, you know, in my experience, when you go down to court dealing with housing, two of the first faces you're gonna see is Ms. Long and Canyon. And so, as the Chair, and when we're having this discussion about how the money and where the money should go, I definitely would like and would hope that it would land in the hands of people that are actually doing the work and, you know, give us a chance to empower helpers. A lot of times, people always feel like the people that are helping are straight, you know, they can handle the things that they're attempting to address, and that's not always the case. So, you know, let's keep in mind and let's try to work with the people that are working with the people that need help right now. And as I said earlier, this number is not going to get smaller. These courts are gonna get overburdened with people being separated from their current housing. So, I look forward to us coming up and developing a plan. I'm sorry some others couldn't be here tonight that wanted to, that had things to share. So, I also would like to recognize Councilman Richard Conney, who walked in as being graceful not to walk in the middle of the meeting, but he has joined us, and I would like to give him an opportunity to speak if he... So, with that being said, I look forward to the next meeting, and I believe it will be scheduled tonight before we leave so that we can follow this back up. But at this point, did anyone else have anything that they wanted to say before we close out the meeting?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Are we looking to allocate the funding at this point? Because this is from 2025's budget, and I think we need to have it allocated before the end of the fiscal year. So, are we looking to, is that part of today's conversation or?
Honestly, it was a discussion, and one of the first, before we start talking about allocating anything, I wanted to give committee members a chance to have input on it, and it seems like we're all in agreement that we should do something positive to try to make an imprint on the housing crisis. So, with that being said, I think that our next meeting, I think that we can have some discussions and then call another committee meeting and just move in that. I didn't want to do anything hasty. I wanted to have the, have people who didn't have a chance to participate in this meeting to have a chance to put their name in the hat and try to do this responsibly. So, tonight, I didn't have any intentions on allocating money. I think that to give people a week or so, it will put us in a position to be able to finish it up before this calendar year is over. So, with that said, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
No, I don't think there's enough here. Okay, welcome, everyone, to the Monday, November 17th Caucus and Work Session of the Albany Common Council. It's our work session prior to our regular meeting. Ms. Jackson, would you please call the role?
Yes. Adams.
Present.
Anani. Ballerin.
Here.
Clark. Conti.
Here.
Pharaoh.
Here.
Flynn. Frederick. Hoey.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Love.
Here.
Robinson. Zamer.
Here.
Ten present, five absent. We are...
We good?
Good, yes.
Okay.
We're also joined by Council President Corey Ellis.
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for being here both tonight. We're gonna, before jumping into the agenda, we're gonna start with a bit of information. We're gonna hear from Chief Brendan Cox on the recent incident that occurred in front of the library on November 4th. The idea is to hear from the chief. We're not doing question and answer. It's gonna, he's gonna impart a little bit of information to us, and that's gonna be the extent of that, because we'd set us, well, we have a lot of business to take care of for one, with the budget and things, but also, we'd be setting ourselves up for failure to be doing a question and answer where there are tons of questions that he can't provide us with answers for. So, we'll...
Kelly, I believe we're also setting up a meeting in the near future.
Right, yeah.
Where we, where councilmembers will be able to question.
We're setting up a subsequent public safety meeting to have a deeper discussion on that issue. And then also, following the chief, we'll have our program director from the CPRB share a bit of quick information with us also. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, chief.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for having me here tonight. So, on November 4th at approximately 4:01 PM, the Albany Police Department received a call for service from staff at the main branch of the Albany Public Library, 161 Washington Avenue, for a fight, and police officers were dispatched and responded to the address, the situation. Officers arrived shortly after the call was received. Emergency medical personnel were already on the scene. During the initial call, an officer attempted to detain an adult female who failed to comply with the officer's commands and also bit the officer in the leg. That woman was subsequently taken into custody and charged with one count of assault second, one count of obstructing governmental administration, one count of resisting arrest, and one count of harassment second. The actions of the officer during the detainment and arrest of the female and his subsequent interactions with several other people quickly came into concern and have since become the subject of an internal investigation within the department's Office of Professional Standards. I want to note that I completely understand the community's concerns, and I understand the members of this council's concerns. I also note that I have concerns. I want to note that it was not the video, it was not social media, it was not the news reports that caused this internal review. It was actually a supervisor's review of that incident that night that started the department's own internal process, which is exactly what I expect. It's exactly what we expect. It's exactly what we expect as a department, it's what you should expect from your department, and it's exactly what happened that night. The department's desire is to have a complete and accurate investigation into this matter as we would in any case where an officer may have acted inappropriately. We have a process to address these issues and I want to assure everyone that that process is well underway. It has been well underway since November 4th. This includes interviewing witnesses, both internal witnesses and external witnesses, and reviewing things like video, both our own video and video that includes video we do not have control over. It also includes working with our stakeholders, especially the Community Police Review Board, no matter what state the CPRB is in, and I don't say that as anything other than understanding what the state the CPRB is in. But I also want to note that internal investigations start in the police department and they happen no matter what the state of the CPRB is in and they will happen no matter what happens with the CPRB. I fully stand behind the CPRB. I fully stand behind independent, external, independent investigation. I'm perfectly, I've made that statement over and over again. I made it before I left in 2017. I've made it while I was gone. I've made it since I've been back. But independent of the CPRB, there is an entire process that exists within the Albany Police Department for investigations and that has been going on no matter what, just like it has in this case. So I understand the concerns of this council, I understand the concerns of others, but I certainly hope we're not gonna get caught up in something that we don't need to get caught up in when it comes to, I know everybody's trying to address the CPRB, but we need to address this investigation as this investigation, not part of a broader issue that is currently going on. We do have an open door policy when it comes to the CPRB and we will continue to have that. We have that with this case and we have this with every case. We have a seat, open door policy when it comes to all of you and we will continue to have that. I often speak to you, our community, and our officer about the tenants of procedural justice. I believe strongly in the tenants of procedural justice. I believe in that for our public and for our officers. I believe in being fair and just and in order to do so, I need to have a full investigation to take place. I want that investigation to be transparent, but I also need to make sure that there's due process that's gonna take place and we need to make sure that that balanced approach takes place and that's what we're doing. So that process is undergoing, that in, that internal investigation, and I'm confident that as that investigation comes to an end, we will be better as a department and we will be better for a city when that happens. And I'll be happy to meet with you all further as we move further into that. I've been asked to give a timeline. I'm a little hesitant to give a timeline because when it comes to our internal process and when it comes to internal employees and internal video, that stuff is easy, but there are other people that are not under my control that we need to ultimately interview. There is other independent video that we are attempting to get, so I just wanna be a little bit careful. We are gonna get this investigation done as quickly as possible and come to an outcome as quickly as possible. So I'm just asking for a little bit of time. We normally ask for a 30-day to 60-day turnaround. I'm gonna try to get that done as soon as I possibly can, but again, it's easy for me to call in our own employees and inter.
Get your questions answered. Okay, Mr. Schaaf, you got 10 minutes.
I hope it's not gonna be that long.
Five minutes.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Based off of recent changes to the CPRB as reported in the news and known to members of this body, I am here to reassure the community and this body that CPRB is still operational and working for the City of Albany. In addition to the CPRB still accepting complaints and responding to them, we are busy working to ensure that once the body and/or, or once this body and/or the mayor appoint new members, we, new members, we can quickly resume the public work of the board. I am pleased to report that the CPRB is receiving and responding to complaints to include complaints related to the incident Chief Cox just spoke about, participating in prospective new member interviews, which we did today earlier this, with the Public Safety Committee. We interviewed, we participated in an interview of three prospective new members, finalizing job postings to hire senior investigator, investigator and confidential secretary. Last week, all of those job postings were approved by the board and provided for final submission and publication with Human Resources. Earlier today, we published a request for proposal for the CPRB's outside legal services. We are in the process of finalizing a draft proposal for investigative services and hope to have that done later this week. We are presenting tomorrow to the APD's Recruit Academy of New Officers, myself and two board members. We are in the process of crafting a survey to solicit community input and feedback on how to address the historic backlog of the board's caseload as well as if there needs to be adjustments to membership qualifications. We are in the process of laying the foundation to resume complaint reviews once a quorum is established to include completing internal reviews of complaints so they can be presented and voted on once a meeting can resume. To date, in 2025, the CPRB has received approximately 78 complaints and has approximately 148 open complaints. Approximately 70 of those 148 complaints are pending member review, presentation and vote. We are actively working to ensure that once we have a quorum, we can immediately proceed with those reviews. I thank you all for your dedication and commitment that you have demonstrated for the CPRB. In my short six-month period here, I have not met a single member of this body who is not vested in the success of this program and I appreciate that because that is something that is needed. Thank you for your time and as always, feel free to reach out to me directly. You can send me an email or call me at any time and I will respond when possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaaf. All right, so we'll get into our regular agenda and move on to our budget things. So just starting out, the top of the agenda, we'll have a couple of public hearings, public hearing ordinance 206224, ordinance 168225, ordinance 199125, and ordinance 2710125. Those will be the subject of the, of the public hearings. Kelly?
We had a couple of council members come during the presentation. Hyde and I believe Sonya.
Oh, okay, so.
We're also joined by council members Frederick and Hyde Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Howie. Okay, so on to meetings from a previous meeting, I'll be offering the November 3rd of 2025 meeting minutes for approval. Okay, then on to local laws. We'll be taking up local law F for introduction by Ms. Zamber. It's a local law in relation to the Monuments Commission, in relation to the scope of the commission's responsibilities and authority. That'll be referral to the Law Committee. The next local law C, sponsored by Councilmember Frederick, will be an amendment. I think we're adjusting, amending some salaries in that, but that's for amendment only? Do you wanna say something about?
Yeah, the amendment is just aligning the positions to what we have in practice and also in the budget book. Prior, local law did not recognize the president pro tem or the majority leader salary and so it needs to be amended to night age and then we can vote on it next meeting.
Thank you. And so then after that, we'll be taking up local law D, also by Ms. Frederick of 2025. You wanna? Local do, local law D, waste collection?
Local law D, yes, so might be easier to talk about this in.
Okay, right, and right, so after we, after we deal with the local laws, based on Mr. Conti's suggesting that we kind of group everything together, what we're gonna do is after we get through the local laws, we'll take ordinance 2710125 out of order, resolution 12310125 and resolution 13211225 are out of order to group all of the, the budget stuff together. And so if you actually want to now, we can, you, you wanna start?
Can you repeat the?
At, bring it out of, take it out of order. Ordinance 2710125, resolution 12310125 and resolution 13211225.
Kelly, for purposes of discussion here, can I suggest that we go through the rest and then go back and have that at the end so you have more time to go through everything?
Okay, yeah. Yep, Ms. Frederick, however you wanna take us through it.
Please, I go through the rest of the agenda.
Oh, oh, and then go back to, oh, okay, yeah, all right, so we'll do that. All right, so then next, under resolutions, be a resolution by me pending amendment, it's a, excuse me, ordinance pending amendment, is ordinance 266123, that's MWEB ordinance, came out of committee with a positive recommendation. We were waiting on some updates to the, the percentages which went out to members a couple days ago for, for review, so we made the adjustments to the percentages and I look forward to moving forward with passing that. Then next, resolution 206224 is ordinance for what, the parking permit system and modifying the boundaries. That is under consideration also, that's been talked about and came out of committee with a positive recommendation. Then next, this is Mr. Hyde's 2410125, so we're doing, let me go through my, there we go. Just one second. All right, okay, good, got it here. So yeah, we'll be taking up Mr. Hyde's 2410125. It's, there's a amendment that went out, it should be on everyone's desk. I don't know if you had a chance to review it or not, we'll be discussing that. Next resolution is the budget one, so we'll, we'll skip past that one. The next, Mr. Conti's resolution introduced 13111225, so resolution recognizing transgender day remembrance and honoring lives lost to anti-transgender violence. I believe members express desire to be co-sponsors. David Clark.
Yeah, Kelly, excuse me, on that one, is it possible after public comment, if we can take that up, out of order for a possible presentation? I'm expecting that there'll probably be some people here later, so is that?
Yeah, that's fine, that's, you guys have that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, then next, that 132 is the budget, we'll discuss that. The next under resolutions held by me, 979125 is resolution honoring the contributions of Maggie Massenelli Cahill in renaming a portion of North Pearl Street in her honor that came through the General Services Committee with a positive recommendation. We'll be moving forward with that. That was one for the mayor in my area. Then next, resolution 1119225 by Councilmember Ballerin, is resolution honoring life and legacy of Dennis Lee Edney in renaming a portion of Washington Avenue with his honor. We'll be moving forward with that. Then next is the home set, non-home set, which Ms. Frederick will be speaking to. And then lastly, by Ms. Frederick, 12811125, it's a resolution to council reappointing Francis, Francis Cosgrove as a member of the Board of Assessment and Review.
So originally, Mr. Cosgrove came to the Finance Committee, spoke about wanting to continue service, well-qualified 15 years' service to the Board of Assessment and Review. Ultimately, prior to, was a part of the State Department of Tax, so a wealth of experience. He was invited to come this evening. He unfortunately had surgery, he's recovering, so he couldn't join us this evening, but I do ask for your support and if there's any questions, we're happy to print his resume out for the body.
Right, and he's been with us for a length of time, so I, I think, I think most members would be okay with moving ahead with him. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just wanted to express my disappointment, the gentleman that we use to make the point of honoring people who are still alive has not been mentioned as far as street names is concerned, and if he was in my, if I had the ability, I would've said Lloyd Stewart from day one. You know, just wanted to put that out there because we used him to make the argument about recognizing people while they were still here, letting people have their flowers and it didn't happen for him, so I just wanted to, and it's sad that.
What am I gonna do, say no?
The person that needs to hear this is not listening right now, but thank you.
Say no, maybe just kidding. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So that was it, did I miss anything on the agenda? Cause we're gonna go to Ms. Frederick right now, yeah. What did I miss?
I, I'm sorry, thank you, President Pro Tem. I know we, we need to talk about the budget, but if we have time after the budget, I was hoping we have a quick discussion about the amendments to ordinance 24 that 101 that 25.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we, yeah, we have to.
We have some time. Thank you.
So do you wanna do the budget stuff first? I mean, okay, we'll do the budget stuff first, but we definitely have to talk about ordinance 24. So Ms. Frederick?
Thank you. And starting by thanking you all for your commitment to the budget season and providing the transparency to our city and really looking at ways that we are best serving our constituency. As an update to you all, where we left was as a committee wanting to pursue a property tax decrease from 3% to 2%. Per discussion with the administration since our last meeting on Thursday, we have hit some differences there that I wanna go, go over with you. So ultimately, the administration has made it very clear that if we go to 2%, they will veto that, they have made their stance. I do anticipate the administration coming here this evening and giving public comment to that. With that, they did provide their proposed amendments on behalf of the Budget Office to get us to that 2%, approximately 630,000. That was solely focused on reducing the Summer Youth Employment Program, non-TANF recipients. So obviously, as a body, I don't wanna assume, but we, we will not be touching Summer Youth Employment. Yeah, so secondary to that, they have agreed to, although their stance is we shouldn't do any reduction, to a 0.5% reduction to property taxes as a compromise that would not be vetoed by the administration. On your desk, you have an email from Chief of Staff David Gallin that I would like to walk you through. This includes their proposed reductions for the 0.5%. In summary, all of these are areas where they are comfortable with reduc, with the reductions approx, coming to a total of 315,000 necessary for 0.5. Starting from the top, it would be reduction to streetlight utilities of 100,000 per the administration. This is an expenditure they found that was mistakenly misclassified post-budget release, so there would be no effective loss in service. The second being DGS hourly 100,000, this would be a reduction to DGS seasonals by 100K, current budget of 1.225 million. In discussion with them, further discussion, both overtime and seasonals have increased over the years and DGS and the administration have been in conversation about reducing hourly, so they indicated that this wouldn't come as a surprise and this is where they need to go for the future. The next being DGS motor vehicle repairs, 50,000 means that DGS would need to hold some, a portion of motor vehicle repair expenses closer to 2025. uh, closer to twenty-twenty-five levels, so being consistent with the actuals from this year. The next being a forty thousand dollar reduction to the city share of county elections expense. Um, this expense is controlled by the county, however, uh, they indicated that the amount that we have allocated currently in the budget for that is more closer to what they would expect in a presidential year. They do not anticipate a gubernatorial election year to come into, uh, that high of cost, and so they think there's some wiggle room there. And then finally, twenty-eight thousand dollar reduction from administrative service office equipment. This is the Budget Office foregoing purchases of new desk in twenty-twenty-six and deferring to twenty-twenty-seven. So this is how the administration, uh, proposed going to three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So, two items on the table. First, their proposals. Going down to two percent would have been, um, from their proposals, Summer Youth Employment reduction. Second proposal from them, compromise, no veto, point-five percent property tax reduction with their proposed adjustments I just walked through. Third, that we wanted to put on the table for discussion this evening, is the combination of the point-five percent reduction from the city plus an additional attempt, uh, by myself, Councilmember Farrell, Brian, others, to try to come up with another three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand for your consideration. I will say, if you look at this, it is, um, it is, uh, it was not an easy task to find another three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand in the budget. Um, this would include cutting from a number of offices, offices, as you can see. It would include reducing things like Alive at Five, reducing tree services, et cetera. But we at least wanted to put an attempt in front of you this evening without just saying it would be Summer Youth Employment. So, in summary, this is the third, um, proposal on the table, which would be a combination of their hundred, their three-hundred-and-fifteen plus our attempt to find another doubling of that number. I do wanna have the body discussion with you all. In my opinion, um, in going through this process, I think we should proceed forward with the zero-point-five percent reduction. I think it's a good faith effort to address affordability in our city. It's also, um, reluctantly supported by the administration and comes to a compromise. So I'm happy to take any questions, comments, uh, but that's what I wanted to discuss this evening with you all. Councilmember Keegan?
Um, I just, I think it's important to note for those who didn't come to our budget discussions, first and foremost, I, I think I'm the only person on the Finance Committee who did not, um, support, uh, reducing revenue. Um, and I, I feel very uncomfortable, uh, reducing revenue at all this year. One of those pieces of that concern is that we have a new administration coming in. It's a historic moment for our city, and it's been made very clear to the Finance Committee that those reduction cuts may very well place our new administration or incoming administration in a position to have to override the tax cap, um, for twenty-twenty-seven. In addition to all the various other, um, unknowns coming down the pike this fiscal year for the City of Albany, I also do feel that there are already some structural issues in the budget in terms of what the anticipated revenue that is built in, um, is. And in addition to that, we have at least one outstanding union contract that will amount to, um, roughly about a two-million-dollar hole in the budget. So, I, for those who didn't kind of follow along with every single finance mini-, committee meeting and all of the discussions that we had, um, I would really strongly urge my colleagues to support, um, the best revenue outcome for the city so that we can really try to adequately maintain the services that we have going into twenty-twenty-six. Thank you.
Councilmember Balleran?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, I, I wanna thank you, and I wanna thank everyone who's been working on this over the last few weeks. Uh, and I wanna thank all the hard work that was done by staff and council members, as well as the administration, to try to find a compromise. I think compromise is very important. Uh, and, uh, as most who have been watching the, uh, Finance Committee, you know, that I was looking for a reduction originally in the trash fee, um, to try to make it more affordable for residents, looking at the fact that it was such a large increase. And the committee came with a compromise to address the tax levy, uh, and I, I, I appreciate that compromise that was put forward. I, uh, I, uh, I know we have very tough days ahead of us. Uh, Alpa Funtakon, and the budgets as we come forward are not gonna get easier. Um, but I do still believe that it's important that we all get in the room and we all work on these issues uh, without the fear of difficult conversations. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that was done by, uh, by all the committee members, and I appreciate the work that was done by the Chair. Uh, and I, I will support the two-point-five percent levy, um, recognizing the hard work that was done to try to find savings and to try to find us, uh, put us in a, in a better place, uh, in the future. So, thank you, Chair. Thank you to all the committee members, uh, and thank you to the administration for all their work on this.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to put this out there in just conversation, since we're, we're having an open conversation about this. Um, and wanna thank you, um, for your diligence and hard work through each budget process to advocate and, um, try to find ways to achieve some of our goals as a council. Um, my biggest takeaway right now, as we've been going through this budget process, is trying to figure out if the juice is worth the squeeze. Um, as we look at some of these cuts that are being proposed through various departments, uh, for activities, uh, we also have to look at the consequences that then result from having those cuts as well. Um, so that's also more loss in revenue, uh, for some of these events. I understand that this is a very hard, difficult conversation and wanting to, um, deliver, um, some results to constituents based off of the increases that we're seeing in this budget. Um, however, again, um, I, I do, I do appreciate and like the, the compromise that was negotiated. Um, if we are going to, um, make an effort to provide some type of relief, I think this is maybe the best course. Um, however, with that, it's still the bigger question of, is this the best thing to do? Um, with knowing the, um, possible consequences that are down the line. Um, that's gonna affect us in many different ways in the future, so, um, for me, um, this is a very difficult decision to make, but I would love to support the, um, compromise, uh, position as council members feel so, um, passionate about moving forward with this. Um, so, um, I just wanna at least say that in the future, um, as we have more conversations about revenue and debt service and trying to find ways to, um, increase things, uh, we're gonna be having much more discussions about making cuts as well, so, don't look forward to those conversations, but that is the reality, um, that we seem to be in. Um, so I'm hoping, um, that, you know, if this budget does go through, or when it goes through, um, that this next administration is prepared and ready to, um, provide the solutions to address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you very much, and, uh, again, thank you, Chair, for all you've done to shepherd us through this difficult budget process. So as we go through the budget, and I will say, uh, well, Councilmember Frederick did do the lion's share of going through line by line. I also went through, and I will say, having done that many years over the year, many times over the years, um, this definitely is, a lot of the places where my go-to cuts would be, were already cut. So this is, there's definitely a lot of work that was done by the administration to cut things in a lot of places before we even got the budget. Um, I also wanted to add for anybody that is listening, that the only things that we are allowed to do in terms of amending a budget as a council is, uh, we have the ability to add or increase programs or amounts. We may delete or decrease any programs or amounts, except, and the except is a big one. Um, those items required by law, debt service, judgment, salaries, or for estimated cash deficits. So there's actually quite a few things in the budget that we are not able to hit, hit, touch, especially when it comes to salaries, which is, um, when it comes to a municipality, we are people-powered, and that is, and it should be the majority of what we can, what we do as a municipality. My, when it comes to a budget, you always have to look at two sides. You wanna make sure that you're spending on things that benefit your constituency, and I believe strongly that the administration worked hard to do that. Um, I think that the additions that they are putting in, they're doing because they believe it is what is best for our community. Uh, but with every budget, whether it's your home budget or a municipal budget, you have to look at both sides. And you have to look at your revenue, and you have to then look at your spending. And sometimes, although you want to spend in certain areas, your revenue just doesn't allow it. And, um, that is one of my concerns, is that I don't know that our revenue allows us, or what we should be using as revenue with good conscience, allows us to have the spending that we have. And one of the reasons I say that is because when we had our tax assessments changed, I was going through every single neighborhood throughout the city, and I talked to a lot of people, particularly elderly people with two-family homes whose tax assessments and taxes went up dramatically. Um, when our tax assessment changed, our two- and three-family homes had the most significant change in assessment and tax change. And a lot of those homes are owned by people who are also closest to having an issue paying for, maybe not able to pay for everything. Um, there's a lot of older people who had family that lived in the other apartment, and they were concerned that they would not be able to hold on to their home because the taxes, taxes would go up so dramatically. So the difference between, for those people whose taxes just went up dramatically, between three percent and two percent is a big difference because their taxes just went up. So I, my heart would honestly prefer the two percent, and I will say, it's not an easy two percent. I, I fully acknowledge that. It is not one that I like. There's cuts here that I would not like to make. Um, I am absolutely willing, I have an incredible amount of respect for my colleague, Councilmember Frederick. I know that she has done a ton of work on this, and, um, and it is usually my go-to to defer to somebody that's put that much work in. Um, I'm open to it, but I have to be honest with you, it is my preference to have the two percent despite the difficulty because I am so aware of how many people in this city, that, that difference, that half percentage difference is actually going to make a difference in how they can afford their home, and I think everyone should be aware of that. Because that's something that, um, these times have been coming for a while. If the administration was worried about having to override the tax cap at a certain point, they could've chosen to have a quarter of a percent higher in the past several years. And similar to the trash fee, it's all hitting at once this year. We need to be a lot more gradual when we come to the fiscal impacts on our constituency, and this budget is not, and I have a lot of concerns about that. Um, again, I fully support looking and having a good view of the future, but with every budget, as you look to the future, you have to look at your revenue, and you have to make sure it's responsible. And that is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Conti?
Um, thank you, and I wanna commend the Fin-, Finance Committee. I did attend most of the meetings. I appreciate the work you did. Um, I think, uh, moving forward next year, the council does need to look at the charter in terms of, uh, the council's ability, which I, we've talked about that a lot in the past, um, but that, that's an important area to look at. Um, the property tax issue is, uh, the one most important to me. It does have an impact. Um, I think, uh, Councilmember Farrell really hit a lot of my concerns, uh, in terms of it does translate into affordability um, and issues in that respect. Um, I understand the problems between the two, the two-point-five, um, I'm going to go with the two-point-five. Uh, but, um, I think, uh, as we move forward, and I think, um, you might find issues more challenging next year. And this is gonna put additional pressure on the property tax levy, um, which I, I, you know, it's always falling back on the property tax levy. We can always increase that, but the little bits we do, uh, it's like a drip, 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 and it starts to really have, it has real impacts, especially when it's combined with the other, um, taxing jurisdictions that we have. The school district, I mean, well, I, the, uh, the library district didn't increase this year, uh, because of declines in revenue and, uh, others. So those are, the, the combination is what really, really begins to hurt, uh, but every little bit helps. So, um, moving forward, I hope, I mean, there really is a need to find a different source of revenue than the property tax levy. Um, and, uh, there needs to be a sensitivity in terms of, uh, on, on the upper-level government, that there really impact, there are real impacts there, uh, and that we need to really be, uh, looking at that. So, um, uh, I, I appreciate again the work that you've, you've done and trying to move forward with something, uh, and, uh, I'm okay moving forward with the two and a half percent if that's where people are. Thank you.
Councilmember Anani?
Uh, th- thank you, Chair, and I just wanna thank the Chair of Finance for all the work, uh, you have done, and, you know, the countless meetings, and, uh, again, when we talk about the tax levy reduction, especially, uh, uh, my colleague Megan King, you said it, you know, this is a historical election, and I think that many, all, all of us in this city wanna see the next administration succeed, and, uh, when you think about, you know, whether it's, uh, three percent tax levy or even two-point-five and a half to, two, two, two and a half, um, we're talking about, uh, three-hundred K-plus difference, and I think that, you know, when we look at this tax levy, particularly for the next administration, I wanna make sure that they have all the cash at hand they can, you know, to succeed and have a successful, at first term, so, um, I will be supporting the two and a, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at least from comments received, it sounds like we are, um, favorable relatively to the two-point-five percent. Um, just wanna take a, take a pulse on that. We could just do like a hand raise to see who would support a two-point-five percent. Okay. All right, so, majority, uh, majority calls, so what we will do is, we will not pursue this table here, which was our attempt at, um, a one percent reduction. We will also not pursue the administration's proposal for the, uh, Summer Youth Employment Reduction, um, to get to the one percent. We will be voting on tonight a budget inclusive of a two-point-five percent property tax, albeit a zero-point-five percent reduction by the common council. Um, outside of that, I do wanna discuss some other budget items with you. So inclusive in our ordinance, you will see a couple small items. We had a, a couple, for those that joined meetings, you all are well aware, but we had a couple small movements within the common council, um, to address some purchases for, for desk for our staff. That was net neutral, so no change to budget itself. We were just moving line items. Uh, we also had the only increase to budget, and that is very important because we were, um, very cognizant of this as a body. If we were pursuing a reduction, we truly couldn't go on the opposite side and say we need increases elsewhere. The only small nominal increase is three thousand for the city clerk. Uh, quotes were provided to update the front desk of the city clerk's office, which as you see as you walk in, it is in, uh, it is in need of repair. And those quotes came back three thousand above budget, so that is the one small increase that we have. Um, the other item that we had for discussion is related to the chief city auditor's, uh, office. They came in during budget season and requested a couple things, a chief of staff position, as well as an additional auditor- as well as an additional auditor position. Ultimately, we decided in conversation with them that there are, and they, quite frankly, the chief city auditor-elect decided there is money within contracted services to move up to another position, and that they only needed approximately 90,000 within that budget line item to conduct their annual audit. So they will be foregoing, or looking to forego, any additional audits above that annual. Because that is their interest, what we have done in discussion with the budget office in the ordinance is authorize one auditor position. That would effectively have zero salary from our amendments, but the budget office described that as part of E&amp;A, the chief city auditor can go in, move contracted services to a salaried position, and that is the least path, path of resistance for us to get there and get them another position that they're looking for. The reality is, there just wasn't enough funds anywhere to provide for a chief city auditor, or chief of staff for the city auditor. So we're meeting the request in the middle and looking to add another auditor position internally. Any questions on those changes? Okay. All right, so we will get this all printed, for some procedure we have to do to amend out of committee, changing to 2.5, and proceed forward voting on this tonight. Does anyone want to discuss the curbside collection fee? Thank you, Councilmember Keegan, for that. I know I deferred that as part of the active agenda walkthrough. In summary, we looked at the collective increase to our residents' curbside collection and property tax assessment. While we are definitely concerned about doubling the fee, we also understand the necessity to offset the cost of curbside collection expenditures. And so it is a necessity to proceed forward with that doubling of the fee this year. We do, in our budget intent memo, encourage future administrations to look at more gradual, smaller increases to that fee as the curbside collection increases, so that the impact to our residents isn't, isn't hitting all in one particular year. Councilmember Farrell.
I just wanted to reiterate what I say pretty much every time we talk about the wayside collection fee. This is something that I completely agree, it should have been gradually increased, and I hope in the future it is gradually increased, but as our dump closes, costs will go up. And a reminder that all of the dumps in New York State will be closed in six to 11 years. And when that happens, all of the costs of all garbage will be going up dramatically. So this is something that, it is not a question of if it should happen, it's when it will happen, and it will continue to go up. And I will tell you, we will still be, it will still be significantly cheaper than it will be if we were getting private hauling. It is definitely my hope that as we look at the transfer station, we look at environmental ways to reduce our waste and encourage that in our residents, because ultimately, not only is it the environmental thing to do, but it will also lower costs for us dramatically down the road if we have less waste. So this is something that, I do understand that this is a lot on our constituents, especially with the tax levy increase, but that's why my focus was on the tax levy increase, because I think that this is something, actually, it's not I think, I know this is something that will happen regardless. So it is something I will be supporting, and I, I highly recommend. I know that there's some members that are concerned about getting flack from their constituents, and believe that it will just pass because other people will carry the water. We all have to carry the water on this. This is something that, it, it is going to happen, and if we are not paying for it now, we will be paying for it at some point. So, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. It's hard listening to this, when you've lived in the city for the last 12 years, and you've seen raises, you've seen all types of spending, and now it looks like, you know, at the last second, you know, we talk about the assessments, everything. I've said it before, and the mayor's in here, and I'm not going to bite my tongue, this administration has not been people-friendly. When you look at all the hits that the city residents are, are asked to carry right now, it's a lot at once. And, you know, to say, it's going to happen, it was going to happen, that's where leadership, that's where people who are leading the city, we expect them to be able to come up with a plan, and not at the last, you know, at the last minute say, oh, it's, it's going to happen, and we can't do anything about it. So, you know, it's painful, because the effect, it isn't the same as some of the people that are discussing it, it isn't the same. The effects on some of the people making the decisions aren't the same all over, you know. These increases are going to be passed down to folks, and a lot of times, they're passed down with interest, they don't just pass down at cost. So these decisions are, are going to affect everybody, but a certain group of people are, are just going to get placed, outplaced and out. And, and that's problematic for me, because when we make these decisions, you know, a lot of times, we get those phone calls. I just listened to the chief say his bill, but what that's going to do is going to make more people call us with their questions and, and their concerns, and, and that makes more work for us. And, and so, I, I just, I, I think that our approach to how we come up with a budget really needs to change going forward, because even if you look at these cuts, you know, they've been cutting services for our community for the last 12 years. You know, services have been disappearing, and, and our, our residents notice it. They, they notice when the street sweeper doesn't come. When they move their cars to the other side, and they wake up in the morning, and the street, street sweeper didn't come, we get those phone calls. So some of these cuts are concerning to me, because the potholes, you know, snow removal, if, if people don't think that people noticed that there have been cuts in how they approach snow removal. And that, those cuts affect people's daily commutes to and from work. It's a lot that goes into it, and so I'm, I'm bothered when I hear words like compromise and, and concern about spending, when a lot of times, I don't see that same, I don't see the same scrutiny going when we're spending money. So I just wanted to say something, because it's a lot that has been passed on to the residents. And I will say to the mayor, she's here, she did a good job with not raising taxes. I don't, you know, I don't know if it's a good job. I know people benefited from it for 12 years. So I don't think that to not raise taxes and, and, and get rewarded for that, and then at the last second say, well, we, we, we have to do it, is, is, is not a consolation to people that are going to be, that's going to feel the burden of, of what's to come. So as my colleague said, I would love to see the next administration be in a healthy spot, so they can do some of the changes that the city is calling for. But I just, I'm bothered by the way that I have seen the spending go, and, and knowing that this point was coming, because people talked about it, people called it, they said tougher times were coming. And, and all of this to hit our residents at once, I just think that is, is, is a, is a big swing for some people to have to deal with the assessment increase, to deal with taxes, and then on top of that, we're talking about doubling the trash fee. So I'm uncomfortable with a lot of the conversation tonight, and I just wanted to go on record in making an attempt to be the voice for people that are going to be holding the, the brunt of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. There are two other issues that we haven't gotten to yet. We wanted to touch on ordinance 2410125, and also, that's by Mr. Clark, but then also Mr. Clark's resolution on the eminent domain. We had Mr. McGee at a couple of our meetings, a couple of caucuses, talking about, you know, explaining to us the, the status of the negotiations with the families over the property. I guess at this point, I would just say, by a show of hands, can I see who's okay with moving ahead with the hearing, passing the resolution for the hearing, to move ahead with the hearing? Okay. For, for the eminent domain, yeah, okay. So yeah, that would be Resolution 121, 10125. So we'll be, can you add that into there? All right, and then lastly, the, the ordinance for 2410125. I'll let you lead that discussion, Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Kelly. So I, I'm going to be quick and brief, because I know we've got a hectic agenda. So I just want to let my colleagues know, I will be voting no for the proposed amendment, and I just want to make sure that my colleagues understand why, and the, the concerns that I have with what was put in front of us this afternoon. So one, if you vote for this option, we are very limited in what we can change, because this is the option that they're going to take to the county for county review and county approval. So before it even gets to a planning committee meeting, we're very limited of what we can change, if we can change anything. Two, this was done in a way where a lot of people were not brought in the room, where you didn't have the opportunity to have back and forth, you didn't have the opportunity to have community engagement, you didn't have the opportunity to have uncomfortable conversations. And those uncomfortable conversations are never fun, they're never pleasant, but they make it so that people feel, one, they're a part of the process, and two, people can feel more comfortable with the outcome. Maybe they didn't get everything they wanted, but they were at least brought to the table, and maybe they were to get some of their concerns brought on paper. Three, we didn't create this timeline. This bill was brought to us in the middle of October, in, in the middle of budget season, where the budget is in front of you today, where we have been in meetings day in and day out to address our budget. So we didn't create this timeline, and, and I'm going to push back in the idea that we, we have to get this done before the end of the year. No. We have to get this done right. So it will go on. If, if it's not voted on today, this will go to a planning committee meeting in, in December, we will start the conversation, we will get community engagement, we will get community involvement, we will have those tough conversations. I will get a lot more gray hair. But at least we'll try to come up with something that people feel somewhat comfortable with, even if they don't like it. And, and just to remind people, people didn't like this originally. Do you guys remember? There was people who did not like the original outcome of this on both sides. So we can have those conversations. Look, we didn't create this problem, this problem was well, well, well before we got here. Our city, of two cities, was well, well, well before we got here. But we do have a responsibility to do what we can to fix it. And going back to what we had, or going back to nothing, allowing developers to pay their way out of affordable housing, that's not right. I think we can do better. I think we can be more creative. So I'm going to ask this council to vote no for this amendment. Let's do the hard work, let's get the gray hairs, let's do it together, and let's agree to disagree, but let's not be afraid of those tough conversations. Because it's those tough conversations and those difficult journeys that can sometimes realize, we got more that we get along, we've got more that we agree on than we disagree. So again, I'm, I'm asking all my colleagues again to vote no for these amendments, and allow us to have the conversation, and really try to get this done right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. We'll have more discussion on this during the meeting, but just wanted to point out that the amounts that are proposed could be changed between the county planning referral and a potential final vote. The vote tonight is just to allow this to move forward for further discussion, and I want to remind this body that when it was passed, a lot of members said that if this does not work, that they would look at it and potentially change it, and that came from this body, not the next body. And so I'm asking to have my colleagues support this, at least moving forward for further discussion this session. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, and then we're closing out.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Hyde. This is something that we've been discussing as a council for several years now, trying to find incentives to address the housing problem that we have here in our city. And I don't think this is something that we need to continue to kick down the road. When we have solutions, and we have things that are in front of us that we can actually do, we need to actually start moving on these things, and start making progress in areas of where we can. So I am supportive of this, and hope that other council members will be too, because we can continue to have the conversation, but we still need to enact action behind it, and this is the time to do so. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
So my problem with this is that we don't have any oversight in this city. People are allowed, once you pass a resolution, people are allowed to do as they want to see, and if you want me to consider it, I think they left out a zero. $5,000 to a developer is nothing. $50,000 is something that would make me feel, that would be cautionary to a developer. I don't think that they don't want to keep on giving out $50,000, so that, that could get me to consider this, this resolution, but to put a, a low number like $5,000, and we don't have any true oversight over the matter, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Mr. President? Turn it over to, yeah.
We'll call it a order tonight's Albany Common Council meeting, Monday, November 17, 2025. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Anani.
Present.
Ballerin.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Consey.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick.
Present.
Hoey.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Here.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Zamer.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. Will you please rise with me and say the pledge allegiance, and after that, a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, and to its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we move on to our next item of agenda, which will be a public hearing, we do have the mayor here tonight, and the mayor would like to address the council, so we call up Mayor Kathy Shan, so she can address the council.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to address this council. I want to congratulate each of you who have won reelection or new offices, and for those who decided not to run for reelection, I wish you all the best. Maybe we can get together and have a toast for those of us who are leaving city service, but who will, I know, continue to do incredible things for the city. but who will, I know, continue to do incredible things for the city of Albany. I also want to thank this council for its thoughtful consideration of the budget that we proposed. There are really challenging times that we face, and I know that particularly the increase in the trash fee was a lot that we threw at you. And, and as I said when I presented the budget, that's on us. And I know that it is difficult and that most of you recognize that it's necessary. I do want to address what we've accomplished over the last 12 years. Yes, costs have increased. Yes, salaries have increased, but I'm proud of the fact that they've increased the most for those who were our lowest earners in the city. Because of the urging of this council, we undertook an in-depth salary study, and we looked at what we were paying people. And we are now competitively paying individuals, and those who received the biggest raises were those who were at the lowest end of the earnings spectrum. And when we think about the fact that our trash collection costs have doubled in the last several years, that's because we have been able to give raises to our sanitation workers, again, among our lowest-paid employees in the past. And so that is because of the work of this council and my administration together, recognizing that we have to pay people fairly and that we cannot be part of the problem, that we have to have a minimum wage, that we have to pay a living wage. And so, yes, the cost of that is borne by our taxpayers. And when I think about city services, I am proud of the fact that we have invested more than $100 million in roads, parks, and sidewalks. People, nobody likes potholes, but people can look at the numbers, and I can assure you, we are filling more potholes today and paving more roads today than we did 12 years ago. We have more sweepers today than we had 12 years ago. We are about to cut the ribbon on a new community center in West Hill, and in the spring, we will be celebrating the opening of a brand-new Hoffman Community Center, a community center that was an embarrassment, and that this administration worked hard to focus on bringing something that the community could truly be proud of in the South End. We rebuilt the Lincoln Park Pool, a pool that the prior administration was going to close. And so those are all investments that, yes, they do impact the cost of city services, but we are providing, I believe, outstanding services in the neighborhoods that in the past did not see or benefit from this type of investment. And so I look forward to seeing what those investments are going to produce in the years to come. If I had raised taxes within the cap every year of my administration, the average taxpayer in this city would be paying $1,100 more in property taxes today. And so while this 3% tax increase was one that this council discussed and sought to reduce, I do believe that you will need every penny of it. I respect the compromise that you have reached, but for $11 on a $300,000 assessment, I believe that for our residents, that $11, and that's not $11 a month, that's $11 on a house that's assessed at $300,000, that $11 savings is a risk that you are taking when compared to what you may have to cut if there's a revenue shortfall. But we are not leaving with no plan of action. We are actively looking at pursuing a hotel tax, occupancy tax for the city. Some other cities have gone ahead of us. It was hard fought in Buffalo, and it's been hard fought in some other places, but we believe that there's a revenue source there. And I think that we have to take a hard look at some other revenue opportunities. So I agree that we do need to do more for our residents and for our taxpayers, but I am also proud of what we've been able to accomplish. And I also am proud of the fact that we have built thousands of units of new affordable housing for our lowest-income, most vulnerable residents over the last 12 years. I was also proud of the fact that we were building market-rate housing so that we could attract individuals into our city and help for those who are, want to stay here, to be able to stay here, so that we could have mixed-income neighborhoods in this city. And as well-intentioned and heartfelt, the advocacy both in this room, in this council, and among advocates who are advocating for affordable housing, as, as much as I share that passion, the formula isn't working. And it is beyond time. It has been two and a half years, two and a half years, and it is not working, and housing is being built all around us. So no, it is not interest rates. No, it, it, it is not any of the things that people want us to think that it is. It is that the formula isn't right. And I think it's important for us to look one another in the eye and say, we didn't get it right, but we have an opportunity to level set and revisit. But if we don't get moving on incentivizing middle-class, market-rate housing in the city of Albany, we will continue to see our communities experience higher and higher concentrations of poverty, and we will continue to hear people say that they don't have access to the types of amenities that they want in their neighborhoods, like grocery stores and retail and other amenities. We can do both. We did do both. And so I think that it is past time. This is something that I talked about in my State of the City two years ago. I talked about it again in my State of the City. I've sent you letters. I've shown you numbers. We have looked at the data. And now our chief city auditor has conducted an audit. And not surprisingly, the initial results of that audit appear to confirm that the changes that were made are preventing market-rate housing from being built in the city of Albany. And so it is time to have those difficult conversations, but I think it is also beyond time for us to do what we can for every resident in the city and for the future of this city. If we grow our tax base, then we can provide relief in property taxes to our residents. If we grow our tax base and grow our population, we can attract the amenities and the businesses that support this community. And so I want to make it very clear, I truly believe that we need more tools to be able to create affordable housing in every neighborhood in the city of Albany. And if I believed that the changes that were made to inclusionary zoning were working and allowing us to do that, I would be here talking about the thousands of new units of housing being built. But I am not. And so we owe it to our residents and to the future of this city to work on adjusting, and there will always be opportunities, as new ideas, as new incentives, as new opportunities come down the road, for us to be able to take advantage of that. I have confidence in this body, and I have confidence in the next administration, that they will continue to fight the same fight, to ensure that we are helping everyone in this community and that we are moving our community forward. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to work with each and every one of you, and I know that each and every one of you, in total sincerity and hard work and dedication, do all that you can to represent those who elected you. And for that, I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for that. And I just want to say this before we call up for the public hearing, and just to reiterate, I was at the budget meeting the other day as well, and I thank Mr. Gallin for pointing out the increase in the, in the trash fee. You know, COVID had hit, and so once COVID hit, things changed, so we weren't able to... His explanation was the city, you know, we were dealing with other issues, so it wasn't able to gradual, and that's why we see ourselves with this trash hit at once. So we understand the residents, how they, how they might feel, but there was things in between that prevented that gradual increase in the budget. And also, you know, I spoke and I had said, there's two things that, from being on the council, that I really felt like we, government, had gotten it right, and that was during our COVID, when we teamed up together to really hold the line and on both sides and look at cuts that we might, we might have had to make, but we held the line. And the second thing was the increase of salaries across the city. The city workers were underpaid, grossly, grossly, grossly underpaid. And for the city and this council to come together to figure out what those ranges would be and to increase those salaries, and at, and at the same time, not increasing taxes and keeping taxes at a minimum, those two things, I was so proud to see the city government-elected officials working for the people. And so when you look at this tax increase now, council members, you know, they did what, you did what you could, but we got to be mindful of that we've held taxes and stuff down for a while. And, you know, we, the, the future is unknown. We know there are some tough times ahead, but when you look at this budget and you look at the things we've done in the past, as a council, as the mayor stated, with our parks and things of that nature, you guys should be very proud of what you've done. Yes, some constituents might feel a certain way about the increase, but we've held spending down for a long time in this city. So, you know, don't beat yourself up over it. We understand constituents, you know, citizens are going to have their say, which is okay, but you will continue to work on it and continue to work on it even after tonight. So with that being said, I would like to start our public comment period, public hearing, not public comment. And a public hearing is different than the public comment period. During a public hearing, you can only talk about and address the public hearing notice of that issue. You cannot address any other thing but that. So we have one, two, three, four public hearings on four different issues. You will have five minutes to speak upon the public hearing issue. And after that, unlike public comment, after that, if council members have questions for you, they can ask you questions during a public hearing. Public comment, that is not. So with that being said, we're going to start with the, we're going to have the clerk read the first public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that a common council public hearing will be held on November 17th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, and will be held in advance of the potential passage of the following ordinance. This meeting will be an in-person meeting in the common council chambers, city hall, and will be held on the following matters. Ordinance 206224, and ordinance amending section 357-74, establishment of the residential parking permit system of chapter 359 vehicles and traffic of the code of the city of Albany in relation to modifying the boundaries of the residential parking permit system.
Is there anyone signed up for that public hearing?
No.
Does anyone here want to speak upon that ordinance? Seeing none, we'll deem that public hearing closed. Next?
Ordinance 168225, and ordinance amending chapter 375, unify sustainable development ordinance of the code of the city of Albany in relation to non-conformity determination process. There's no one signed up for that one.
Is there anyone who'd like to speak upon that public hearing? Thank you. Just state your name for the record and city, town, where you live. No, I know where you live, but you don't have to give your address, just state where your place is.
My name is Karen Kniff. I live in Albany. And I just need to clarify, I called the council today, got an answering machine and said I would like to speak. This is one of the things I wanted to speak on, but I have other things. Can I come back and speak on them also?
Yes.
Okay. So you're calling for ordinance 168225, am I correct? So that's the non-conformity determination process. I have been in other council meetings, and I brought it to your attention that I thought there was a problem with this because this amendment was to correct things that were left out of the zoning process when the USGO came into being in Albany. And when I was reading it, it was saying that there would be no public comment. I have to like rephrase that. They were trying to bring properties that no longer fit the code, fit the zoning code for that area. And so that would just be taken away from the process of neighbors saying, but it's now a six-family. It used to be a one-family, and they would not have a say in that not happening. And if that is the case, I think that it's, it's incorrect to deny the public comment. And I thought that perhaps it was unconstitutional to deny public comment to its citizens if they have property and the next-door neighbor has made it a multifamily. That person should have a say in what they're living next to. So unless that has been corrected, you should not pass this amendment to deny the public a comment on something that affects their finances, their taxes, et cetera. So please do not silence the public, and don't vote for this if that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you.
No?
Huh? Pardon me? Ms. Damer?
This is Alfredo, this is Councilmember Balleran's.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other people, persons signed up for the ordinance 168225R, and so we will, that public hearing will be closed. Next ordinance?
Ordinance 199125, and ordinance amending chapter 375, unify sustainable development ordinance of the code of the city of Albany in relation to music at sidewalk or outdoor cafes.
Is it anyone signed up for this public hearing?
Not at this time.
Since there's no one signed up, no one wished to speak, we'll deem this public hearing closed. We've been on the next public hearing.
Ordinance 2710125, and ordinance adopting the city of Albany's budget for fiscal year 2026 as presented by the mayor on October 1st, 2025.
Do we have anyone signed up for this public hearing?
Yes. First person is Carl Urick.
Thank you.
Great. So thanks for members of the common council for having us here today. I'll be speaking about the 2026 proposed budget. You know, a, a quick comment upfront. This is my first time participating in the budget development, and it's taken about three weeks for me to realize who really holds the power in the budgeting process, which is pretty sad, you know? We, we have a budget process that's an executive branch-driven process. We come here, we speak, yell a bit in the public comment period, we express our concerns, and to what purpose? It would really be great if the mayor's office or whoever actually owns the budget process. It's not even clear who owns the budget process, the outgoing mayor, the incoming mayor, the budget director, treasurer, some other person. You know, if, if those people were actually here and held public meetings to gather public feedback, instead we have to come to the common council, which is probably, in the end, pretty low value. Anyway, having reviewed and analyzed the budget, I shared some of that analysis with the common council in a previous discussion and via email, I have some beliefs on what the city needs to do with this budget. 2026 is going to be really rough in, in a lot of ways, and, and from, from all the data that I'm seeing, this, this budget needs cuts on the order of $4 to $6 million of general expenditures and cuts of $4 to $5 million of debt-driven expenditures from our 2026 capital improvement program. And, and yeah, I get it. Those, those are big numbers, big, big numbers. So what I want to do is I want to walk through 10 things that I believe are true, that I believe the data supports, and you can follow along and see which of these 10 things you agree with or disagree with, and feel free to ask me questions later. So let me just go in order here, no particular order. Number- Number one, city currently has an unsustainable level of debt and liabilities and we must do everything possible to not increase these debts and liabilities. Number two, the city has an over dependency on state funding as our primary source of new revenue. We celebrate every year we become more dependent. Number three, the city has issues creating new revenue streams that are material and long-term sustainable. These are the fees, the citation revenues, et cetera. And we've heard a perfect example where we're now grasping for things like hotel taxes to plug the gap. Number four, the New York State Controller's Fiscal Stress Monitoring System shows our city as moderate stress right now. And from my analysis, I conclude there's a strong likelihood of that worsening to a level of significant stress within two years based on our current trajectory. Number five, the city's twenty twenty-six revenue lines for non-state and non-reimbursement revenue streams contain four to six million dollars of revenue that is best described as speculative or at risk. You may recall I sent you an email that scorecards the speculative revenue. Number seven, sorry, number six, the city's twenty twenty-six state funding revenue growth contains a seven hundred thousand dollar funding increase, which should be considered speculative or at risk given macroeconomic conditions. Number seven, the city has not materially added to our property tax base in the form of new residential construction in the last five years and there's little to suggest that this will improve. Where we've added housing, it's not materially growing our tax base. Great that we are adding housing, it's not adding to our, you know, our, our property tax base. Number eight, our city's five-year capital improvement plans twenty twenty-six and the out years will grow our debt at an unsustainable rate.
You have one minute remaining.
Number nine, city's budget provides little to no explanation that justifies the growth in a line item. And number ten, any top line and bottom line relief that comes from the champion in Albany's potential initiative is six to ten years away. The cap pro, program is, is not gonna save us from making tough decisions now. So I, I get it, you know, budget cuts of these sizes that I'm suggesting are difficult decisions in difficult times. Making cuts impacts people and programs that provide value now and in the future. But not making cuts, not making difficult decisions now will impact citizens and taxpayers at a greater, greater level in the future. Happy to answer any questions related to that.
Any questions from councilmembers? Seeing none, I just, point of reference, you referenced that the budget should be public and people should be able to come in. We do have finance budget hearings of every department that is posted. Every department head comes in front of the council and the public is able to come and look at that department's budget during those meetings. So that is public, that does happen during the budget process.
Fair point. That is a common council driven process and not a citizen driven Q and A process. So maybe I, I should have made the, the distinction a little more clear there. I'd, I'd like to be able to ask a question of a budget director.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that that did happen. Every department does come and the citizens can come and ask questions at that, at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Urich. I appreciate your coming. I appreciated your speaking at the first hearing we had. I wish we could do more. But not to repeat, but yeah, we do have limitations on what we can do. So I'm gonna ask you, and I don't know if you can answer that question, but you have experience in terms of other municipalities that maybe have a budget process where their local legislative body has more authority than we do? And if so, I mean, that, that may be models for us to look at because one thing I think we do need to look at in the future or the council needs to look at, I won't be here, but the council needs to look at, and we've discussed that in the past, is how do we increase our authority so we do have an impact?
Yeah. Unfortunately, sadly, I have no experience in that area. I, I wish I had, you know, the, the model of, you know, go talk to Yonkers or go talk to East Green Bush or whatever. But unfortunately, I don't. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Just wanted to ask you, you spoke about your projections in terms of the city's financial position. And just wanted to ask what method or what type of methodology are you using to get to those either numbers or get to those comments that you made?
Yep. Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of it, you know, when we look at revenue expenditures, the, the projection of, of debt and, and how our debt will grow and how we pay down debt. And a lot of that is just like grabbing money from, from our debt reports and plugging it in Excel and, and, you know, looking at their trajectory. In terms of item number four, which is looking at the controller's stress monitoring system. That was just a, a matter of looking at the, the controller's kind of rubric for how they calculate the, the stress level and just kind of playing out what our numbers are likely to be. And it's pretty easy to say, you know, hey, if we go above this number, then we get docked X number of points, et cetera. I, I'd be happy to share any of, any of that information if you had, I think you have my email address. You can feel free to shoot me a note and I'd be happy to share any of that.
Yes, thank you. I think I did read through your email prior before. But again, just wanted to understand the methodology, obviously, when it comes to the financial concern of the city. We all have our own opinions about it, but being able to look at the projection of that was my concern as to what were you looking at compared to maybe what our budget director and other people and house look at while making up the budget. But again, just wanted to thank you for your comments and appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and you know, I, I would say that a lot of this, this need for cuts is really underpinned by the email I sent you regarding our revenue projections. You know, you saw, I don't have an exact number in there, but you know, it'd be like, hey, here's a line item where we, where we earned a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-four. And in twenty twenty-six, we expect to earn three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I mean, numbers that either don't make sense at all, they're illusory, or maybe they are real. But you know, sort of throw bone and, and give an explanation of, of why they are, are real. I mean, most of the, the stresses that I see associated with the budget is, is based on, you know, revenue that, you know, I'd bet a Diet Coke is, is not gonna appear in twenty twenty-six.
He did also mention a comment about the capital projects, I think. Can you speak to that a little bit more as to your opinion about that, as to how that may have, you know, put us in a position? And if you think that is something that the city should continue to either move away from over this next couple of years as to, you know, very expensive projects?
Yeah, you know, in, in very, very broad brush, I would say, we've, we've, we've had a lot of, of debt financing over the last few years. No criticism, I mean, what's done is done. We've, we've bought whatever we bought and we took on debt for, for, for whatever we, we did end up buying. You know, in broad strokes, it, you know, we're, we're at a time where we, we can't pay off debt faster than we're taking it on based on looking at, based on looking at two things. One is the capital improvement program as it exists now and the capital improvement program based on our historical behaviors. You know, if you look at our, any of our five-year SIPs, you can go back five years, we seem to say, again, broad strokes, hey, we're gonna spend a lot of money this upcoming year, but in the out years, year two, three, four, and five, we'll sort of tone it down and, and, and not take on as much debt. Another year happens, we crank up the debt again for the current year. We, we promise then the out years will be better. And so we have this behavior that just is, I don't know, self-reinforcing or something like that. We're just taking on too much debt. And, and it's okay for us to throttle that back for a year, push some stuff out where, where possible.
Thank you. Mr. Baller has a question. Mr. Baller?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your insight and your, your input. I think bullet point three was that we struggle with new revenue. Can you just go into that a little bit more of how, where you, where you feel we can do better? And in all your research, what have you seen that others have done to try to improve, bring in new revenue for?
Yeah, so, yeah, I could probably talk, probably lie on for an hour about this. I mean, on what we should be doing, what we should be doing, you know, I, I probably don't agree with the, the mayor on a lot of things, but I would agree on two things that she said. One is the data suggests, and I agree as an independent observer, that the inclusive housing policy suppresses to some degree the development of our housing. Second thing is we have no money in our budget. I mean, we, we need to grow ourselves out of this, this hole we're in. One housing unit at a time that goes on the tax rolls. You know, a, a red act's house that becomes inhabitable, a vacant lot that, that gets a manufactured house built on it, duplex, triplex, et cetera. I mean, and, and that's where we should be putting our budgetary bets. There's no new money in the budget to support the development of housing. There are literally two dozen things that we could be spending money on that incense housing across every single economic strata. That is the best way for us, in my opinion, for us to grow ourselves out of the hole. You know, in terms of, what did I put here? You know, we have issues creating revenue streams that are material and long-term sustainable. I mean, the poster child for this is the school bus camera program. We project six, we're probably gonna get like two and a half. So then in twenty twenty-five, so next year, we predict we're gonna make four, but we're probably not gonna make like two and a half again. So, you know, we, we, and then we try to find these things like hotel taxes, fees and stuff like that. I mean, it's just not a material, sustainable thing. And honestly, we're pretty bad at projecting what those revenues will amount to. So I don't know, I hope, I tried to answer both of your questions, sir.
I guess I was just curious, what, what have other cities, cities done to bring in new revenue, like?
Develop housing, develop housing that goes on the tax roll as fast as possible.
So housing that goes on the tax roll as soon as possible?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Frederick?
Mr. Urich, thank you for your comments this evening. As always, I think you come with a, a plethora of information for us and you really dive into the details. I do agree, we have limited control as the common council for budget adjustments. But I have to respectfully disagree that this process is not for naught. We do bring transparency to our city residents on the budget. We go department by department and we really look line by line and bring justification to any adjustments that we see. And we're also making changes tonight. While sentiment was shared earlier that an eleven dollar decrease to taxes is not impactful, every dollar counts for our residents. So we have the ability to make some changes and tonight we're going to do that with the property tax. My question for you is, one of your concerns is related to our debt. Are you aware that we are not pass, or we're not voting on our bond ordinances this evening? Because we wanna have a deeper conversation with our treasurer and our administration on our overall debt?
So, so first of all, I, I apologize if any of my comments were hyperbolic. And, and certainly I realize that there is value into a process. I don't think there's as much value as there could be in, in sort of the vetting of the budget process. No, I'm not aware of that and I would say, yes, that is an awesome thing to drill in a little bit to our sort of long-term debt bands and what are we actually buying? And, you know, to me, a pivotal question would be, you know, has anyone explored what we can push off in terms of, you know, debt financed projects?
And we'll notice that meeting shortly and I do encourage you to, to join us during that session.
Thank you very much for making me aware.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell and then Mr. Holwey.
I just wanted to thank you so much for your diligent feedback. As, as I went through the budget process, I actually would go through your annotated notes on the entire budget book before every presentation. So it was very much appreciated. And I, I just wanted to say that it is not always the most exciting thing, the budget. So it is especially appreciative when we have members, there are several other members in the audience that have been paying attention and have been providing feedback. And I know all of the council members really appreciate it and, and definitely use that. So while the budget process could be, there's a lot of things that could happen within it. We do have a very robust budget process and I do know that I personally use feedback from people and bring it when I ask questions and I know my colleagues do the same. So while there's not always a direct opportunity, as representatives, we do, it is part of our job to ask the questions that our constituents bring us. And, and that is something that I think all of us take as sacred. And I also just wanted to note that if everybody has been enjoying the different things that you've been sharing, they also could look to your website, Albany Data Stories, where you get into detail with a lot of different things. You didn't give the plug for it and I just thought that I would do it for you because it's, it's really, there's a ton of information. It's, I highly recommend people look it over, my colleagues and anybody that might be in the audience or listening. So, thank you.
Thank you very much and thanks for providing sort of insight into what happens behind the scenes that I don't have visibility on.
Mr. Holwey?
Oh, thank you and thank you for your comments. I just got a fast question or, and I'm, I'm still trying to figure this out because a lot of people say this, that we gotta grow our way out of our shortages. Now, if we grow, in my mind, you know, you say add ten thousand new housing units. People are gonna move into those housing units, people are gonna have children in those housing units. Our school system is pretty much maxed out. We're gonna need, we're gonna have ten thousand more people. We're gonna have a more need for public safety, fire, police, ambulance, road repairs because now there's more traffic and more people driving. So does growth always mean that that's the, for any municipality, that the only way we can survive is to grow? Because if we look at a piece of bread that you leave out and yeast starts growing on it, eventually keeps growing and eventually the bread's gone. And I always think, you know, we don't think that we're the same way. How much can we support? What is the right level? And I'm just curious if you've looked at that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, so certainly the, the negatives that happen to growth are, are when we do IDA based growth where we give long tax exemptions, property tax, school tax exemptions. And then we, you know, every housing unit, I think like on average is point three students that enter, that enter the school system. And, and when we give away property tax exemptions through IDA, IDA builds, we, we don't have the, the school tax financing and we're immediately underwater. You know, smart growth, where we're adding people, you know, the great thing is the infrastructure is already there. There's very little, yes, we'll have to maintain certain infrastructure and that will come with a little greater cost. But we don't need to build new infrastructure, new roads. And, you know, you put ten houses on Lexington Ave in vacant spots or tear down X buildings and rebuild buildings. Like the infrastructure is already there. And, and there is a leap of faith that you have to take that while, you know, you're, you're, you will see some added costs from, from growth, that the added revenue and added benefit greatly exceeds, exceeds that. And there, there are certainly case studies that we can share on that. I mean, Detroit would be a, a, I mean, certainly Albany's not Detroit, but Detroit would be a great example of, of growth rebuilding a, a city.
Thank you. And, you know, I, you talked about infrastructure and in my ward, one of the things we're lacking is sidewalks. I've brought this up, um, seven, seven years, nine months. We don't have sidewalks. Our kids can't walk to school safely. You know, in the wintertime, you can't go on and, you know, so we do have infrastructure needs in different parts of the city. And it'd be interesting. One of the things, I just gotta give you an aside. I, I wanted to know each ward, what the tax base for each ward is, how much money each ward contributes in? And the next step would be then how much gets spent? And I was told, no, you can't answer, you can't ask that question. I actually went to the treasurer, they couldn't figure it out. So I don't know if there's a way to do that, but it'd be interesting to study. Thank you.
There, there is. And, and we've done a, like a block by block, like, you know, tax value per acre analysis. We haven't released that yet. It really shows that, kind of counterintuitively, the places that you would expect are like the most valuable for the city in terms of tax return are actually the, you know, the, the areas around here, you know, West Arbor Hill, South End, you know, Pine Hills, et cetera. Houses close together with, with, you know, average size, average sized tax loads. We, we need more of that housing.
Thank you, Mr. Holwey. Ms. Damon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I don't know if you expected all these questions, but?
I did not.
But I think we find you fascinating and, and your, your analysis has been really interesting and useful to all of us.
Great.
Just because I'm your representative and I'm lucky that you're in, in my ward. But no, you really, your insights have really been valuable. My quick question is, in, if you've analyzed other municipalities of similar size, do you also take into account the? do you also take into account the high percentage of tax-exempt property that we have as a capital city, which is 60...
4%.
Eight, or four, or seven, or whatever, mid-60%. When you sort of, and I don't mean, you know, you're critical of our dependence on state aid, but how else would you envision us making up for the fact that the state owns so much of our land?
Yeah, I mean, I hate to sound like a broken record, but our path is to grow our way out of this. We have 2,000 undeveloped properties. We have 800 red X buildings. We have, you know, great opportunities to put in duplexes, triplexes, you know, just every single housing type across every socioeconomic class. And, you know, the, our 68%, 68% or whatever the number is, I mean, that ain't changing. So we need to figure out the best way to navigate around that. I mean, yes, we can get money from the state as sort of a compensation, I suppose. But beyond that, our path is to grow our housing. Period.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Please call the next speaker.
Maureen McCauley.
Maureen McCauley, Albany, New York. I was here during a prior budget public comment, period. Several people, including our last speaker and me, spoke about the need for reconciling revenue projections with reality, justifying increases, and taking the uncertain macroeconomic climate into consideration. All for the purpose of ensuring transparency, accountability, and that the taxpayers get what they deserve, which is, they have a right to know how and why their money is being spent, and that it's being spent efficiently. I thought, when we left this meeting, that a template had been provided, and that there would be, following this, a very rigorous vetting of every increase in spending. I don't, I don't see that rigor. Let me tell you, I just spent three hours last week watching the YouTube version of the 1110 budget hearing. And as I was watching, it was really fascinating. I was making notes, and I was commenting, and I thought maybe you would, I would share some of those comments with you. Overall, my overall comment was, a full-time communications director, or two, or three, is the hot-ticket item for department heads, list-wise. And it's understandable. Who wouldn't want somebody who is an expert in communication to tell people what was meant to be said? However, budget-wise, that's not such a great idea. I think there's a better way to do it. But that was not explored. I have one concern, or several, after the mayor's office presentation. Beyond the fact that it was a 50% increase in staff, and it was going to raise the budget for that office from 800,000 to 1.7 million. And that has to do with the full-time position of a deputy mayor. It appeared to me, and I think this needs to be vetted before the budget is voted on, it appears to me that there's a conflict in law between a full-time funded position of a deputy mayor and what the charter says about deputy mayors. And this was amplified for me when I found the local law G, oh, 2024, which never made it out of committee. But it was the same, the same concern. It seemed like there was a desire for transparency and process in this merit. Because the crux, the crux of the charter is, it's temporary. The whole thing is very time-limited. It's not like you always have an understudy, you always have somebody. No, it's time-to, and the people who have held that position in the last 12 years all had regular city titles. And then, as needed, would fill the, whatever was needed for a couple of days. And besides that, it seems that that practice that Mayor Shan's office used for 12 years, which saved money by not having, by using people who were already in the office to be this designee, worked. It worked very well. And I didn't, I didn't detect that anybody was being overstressed or in unfair labor practices. There was none of that. Another position that is also of concern is the counsel to the mayor, specifically designated for the mayor. It seems to me that this could also present a conflict due to, you know, just potential, who are you representing questions?
One minute remaining.
Yeah, did you have a question? Oh, okay, fine. Directors of Communications, I was very impressed with the elected mayor's presentation during that. I'm sure you all were too. She came across as a very smart, engaging speaker, adept at communication. And I wondered if the public would prefer hearing from her directly instead of somebody who processes communication through a couple of layers, and it doesn't sound like her at all. I was thinking, maybe X, maybe X would work for that. I don't think anybody can communicate in the style that she can. The star of this YouTube three-hour video was the corporation counsel. This office came across as efficient. They were very impressive. And they also are, they bring in revenue, and they had a flat budget.
Yes, your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Close up here.
Does anyone have any questions?
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Karen Kniff. Are you, do you have any other comments on the budget? All right, thank you. Last speaker, Keith Irish.
Mr. President, just a point of clarification, that local law G is still on the agendas, for the record. It's still, it hasn't gone away. Good evening, members of the Common Council presence. My name is Keith Irish, a lifelong city resident currently in the ninth ward. I'm here tonight at this hearing on the proposed 2026 city budget before you vote on it later tonight, with recommendations and changes to the original version worked on at the various finance committee meetings held over the last six weeks that very few of you attended. If there has been changes or amendments made since the last finance meeting last Thursday, please excuse me as not knowing what they could be. It appears that you are okay with elected officials, including yourselves, getting an average 15% pay increase, claiming it hasn't been done in eight years. But other salary increases for upper management in various agencies are also in line to get raises. Yet those that do all the work are basically getting no increases. It appears that you are okay with doubling the trash collection fee since it has been adjusted, has never been adjusted since the law was signed. But I have heard, but I haven't heard of any proposal to address the issue annually, to adjust the fee to be more in line with what the trash fee is intended to do. I've also heard nothing about any incentives that could be imposed on the residents to meet the goals of extending the landfill life, such as, but by no means limited to, mandating clear trash bags to be used to see which residents are not doing their part in recycling, or making sure that every house, or up to four apartments in a building, have their own recycling bin, and making that a requirement on rental properties that part of their occupancy permit requires that they have those recycling bins on property for the tenants to use, as well as a list of other recycling measures within the city. It appears that to soften the trash increase, you are trying to lower the property tax increase from 3% to 2%. I heard in order to do that, about a $630,000 decrease would be required in the total budget. Gee, I wonder where that could be cut? Well, let's start with the six of the proposed new positions to be added to the mayor's staff. That's about $561,000 right there. And the raises to the rest of the existing positions would make it a total of about $614,000. Several other agencies are also requesting new management positions, which should easily be able to make up the other $16,000, and then some. There are various ways to trim and cut, but it appears you are trying to pad the issues by hiding them. I could be more specific, but I only have five minutes of free speech public comment. Speaking of free speech issues, once again, you are ignoring your civil duties to provide a more robust and required free speech avenue by not increasing the funding for the city's community media cable access channels, commonly referred to as Channel Albany. But note that there are three specific channels, including the government channel, which should not only be showing all your meetings on, but other city departments that have public meetings that most citizens know nothing about. Such as, but not, again, limited to, all three sections of the planning department, the housing authority, the Port of Albany District Commission, the water board, the water department, sorry, and various other small agencies, boards, or commissions that hold regular public meetings, yet the public does not know about or are able to attend because they are scheduled at times when the public cannot attend them. As I stated last year, 2026 would be a year to regret with the budget for Channel Albany. But you ignored my warnings, and now can't see the light. The budget director said at a meeting...
One minute remaining.
...that the amounts of time have been typical for public access, which of course is far from the truth. The cost of free speech is based on the franchise fee on residents' cable bills, and not a part of the city budget. And as such, should entirely be going to the operational needs of the community channels, and not being hidden in a line item under the treasurer's budget, which should be itemized. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Flynn?
Point of clarification, due to the fact that we have Facebook Live, I was able to not attend all the meetings, but I did watch and review them on my own time. Thank you.
And also, a point of clarification, you did ask about the trash fee. And the trash fee goes to pay for the collection of trash. That was stated at one, at the Finance Committee by David Gallin. And I believe the total amount is still below what it costs to render our trash program. So that's what the trash fee goes towards. It's to fund our trash system. And it's still, I think, a million dollars less than what we need to, two, sorry, $2 million less, 200,000 less than what we need to fund it. So that's what the trash fee goes for. It goes for the cost of picking up our trash in the city of Albany. And also, I'd like a point of order as well. Gentlemen, because we hear this all the time about these red Xs on our buildings. As a person who, 16 years ago, got on this council, campaigning on vacant and abandoned buildings, and changed abandoned buildings ordinance, vacant, the red buildings, the red Xs, the city does not own them. They are owned by, most of them are either vacant or abandoned. There's two different things. Vacant means there's some person paying, some entity is paying property taxes on that building. City just can't do anything with, we just can't take it, we just, they're paying their property tax. The other one is abandoned, where they're not paying property tax. Then there's a long process of that building going through process, and then hopefully go to the Albany County Land Bank. So I just want residents to understand, if the city had, if the city could just, you know, renovate those buildings, we, I'm pretty sure there'd be a plan to do that. So it's not that simple. And I just want residents to understand that when they, because we hear it all the time. Do something with the vacant red buildings. Well, we don't own most of them. They're owned by someone else. So, just for a point of clarification.
Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you, Mr. Irish, for your comments and for always attending our meetings. You're one of the, one of the city residents that showed up to every single finance committee meeting. So I appreciate your diligence and your commitment to our city.
All but one.
All but one, thank you. One of your comments was related to essentially not looking towards waste reduction options. And I just want to bring awareness to our budget intent memo, being that in collaboration with Councilmember Conti, we have language in here urging the administration to explore incentive-based strategies to promote waste reduction, including enhanced household resource separation of recyclables and reduce reliance on non-recyclable packaging. We also encourage evaluating credit mechanisms against curbside collections for those that do compost, and ultimately, looking to reexamine our, reexamine our recycling contracts to ensure we have competitive rates for recyclable materials. So that is something that I know this body is passionate about, and the future body will definitely look to work with the administration on addressing.
And I'm glad to hear that. And I, that's why I wanted to bring up the point for sure, because it seems like there was always talk about, you know, what to do, but how to try to prevent some of the trash needed to be picked up, or how it was picked up. So that's the only reason really why I made that point. But your points are, you know, very valid.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Irish. Thank you for participating. That is the last speaker on the budget, and that is the last public hearing item. And this public hearing is being closed. Now we'll move on to public comment, period. Public comment, period. You have five minutes to talk about any subject you wish to speak upon. At that time, you state your name and location that you live. Unlike public hearing, afterwards, council members cannot ask you any questions. If council members choose to address anything you said, they will choose to do that at another time during the meeting. So with that being said, can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Peter Damon.
Good evening, members of the Albany Common Council and other city's officials. My name is Isabella Kokosko, and I am a paralegal at Lemery Greisler. I assist attorney Peter Damon, representing Manfred and Marian Simon and the Simon Trust, owners of 502, 504, and 506 Rap Road North, which I will refer to as the subject property. I'm here tonight speaking in Attorney Damon's place. Our comments concern Resolution 121.101.25R, authorizing a public hearing on the city of Albany's proposed eminent domain taking of the subject property for construction of a solid waste transfer station. It is our understanding that the hearing could be set as soon as December 15th, 2025. The subject property has been in the Simon family since the early 1950s, when the Simons' parents, when Mr. Simon's parents and relatives built their homes. During their residency, they lived adjacent to the city of Albany landfill, located at 525 Rap Road North. For more than half a century, the family has lived next to the landfill without complaint, without litigation, and with consistent cooperation. Mr. and Mrs. Simon were approached earlier this year by the city to discuss this acquisition, and it appears plans for a waste transfer station have been in the works. In 2024, the city published a request for proposals for development of a waste transfer station. The city did not accept a bid, but still went forward with conducting appraisals of the subject property. Notably, these appraisals did not include a highest and best use analysis, which is fundamental in determining fair market value. Around that time, the parties entered into a right-of-first refusal agreement and were willing to consider an extension to give additional time and flexibility. However, shortly after the city provided these appraisals, it quickly shifted to the threat of to condemn and press forward. In conversations with council for the city, we were told that they must move quickly because the eminent domain process takes a long time. Respectfully, that's simply not accurate. There is no statutory deadline to build a waste transfer station. In fact, it is our understanding that the city already sought preapproval from the D E C for the project. The city's prior outreach to the D E C clearly demonstrates that the acquisition has been the city's intent for quite some time and is independent from the Common Council's decision to pass this resolution. The urgency to acquire the subject property is solely at the city's discretion and should not sway the Common Council to steamroll and pass this resolution. With the landfill's anticipated closure, we understand that a transfer station is a necessity, but the Simons should not have to pay the price by being abruptly pushed out of their home. out of their home. We respectfully request that this council allow the, allow the Simons time to review the city's underlying documents and obtain independent appraisals. It is vital to understand the logistics of an eminent domain proceeding and just how quickly the Simons could lose their home. Under New York's eminent domain law, once a public hearing is held and a determination and findings report is issued, the city can promptly move to vest title and seek possession. This whole process, claimed to be extensive, could happen in a matter of months, and the subject property, which has been consecutively owned for more than 70 years, could be legally taken. Since the last regular meeting just two weeks ago, the Simons have done everything the city deemed necessary, including retaining an appraiser. The independent appraisal of the subject property will include the required highest and best use analysis and is estimated to be completed within three to five weeks. Additionally, our office submitted FOIL requests to obtain any and all records concerning the city's planning, environmental review, and site selection process for the transfer station. Those requests remain outstanding. In light of this, it would be premature to move forward with a public hearing tonight to enforce this matter forward. The Simons are not opposing the city's objectives. They are only asking for fairness, time, and transparency. They have been cooperative residents and community members for generations. In the event the parties are unable to reach a settlement after the appraisal is obtained, and if the city still wishes to proceed at its breakneck speed to take the property, it will have lost virtually nothing by allowing a few additional weeks of fairness. However, scheduling a public hearing tonight would force the Simons to negotiate without an appraisal, which is not fair, not considerate, and not in the best interest of the city. In conclusion, we respectfully ask the council to extend the same consideration now and continue to table this resolution until the Simons appraisal is completed and meaningful discussions can take place. We look forward to continuing to work with the city in good faith to reach a solution that is fair to all parties. Thank you for your attention and consideration to this important resolution.
Can the clerk call next speaker?
Kimberly McCoy. Kimberly McCoy. Charles Robinson. Dr. Carolyn McLaughlin.
Welcome back, Madam President.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Carolyn McLaughlin, and I am a resident of the First Ward and currently a Albany County legislator representing the First District. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. As I sit and listen, I recall that it was ten years ago that I retired from this body. I can't believe it's been that long, but I find myself, and really in an enviable position, because at the county level, we are also undertaking a review of the county budget. And listening to you tonight, I really understand the challenges that you have in making the decisions that you have to offer for the people to the City of Albany, and I commend you for the work that you're doing, and there's no way that we can say thank you enough for all that you do. But I came here tonight because I wanted, for one, to talk about the Citizens Police Review Board. As one of the original sponsors of the Citizen Police Review Board legislation back in 2000, I am compelled to come here and say something about the condition in which we find ourselves with the CPRB. The original intent was to protect the citizens and the police department, to find our, to watch and see that three members of the board resigned at once. It's heartbreaking to know that what the citizens, as well as, there was at least three council members that worked on this legislation, along with a large body of individuals from the community. And to see it in the state where we're at now, it really is troubling to me. So I would just ask that you stay at the table, continue to have conversation, to continue to try to find the right people to sit at the table so that nobody's left behind. Continue to have conversation such that people don't feel like it's a weak body or a body that has no teeth, as we've been talking about for over 20 years. When you decided to incorporate subpoena power a few years ago, I thought we were moving in the right direction. But please, do not abandon the ship. This is a project. This is a concept that we need here in the City of Albany. It has been working. What changed? I don't know. We have to do a better job, I think, of recruiting the kind of people who understand what the purpose of a CPRB is and how it can help to move the city forward. If we're going to address these other issues that are confronting our city, if you're going to make people believe that this is a safe city and that you have the opportunity to recruit officers that want to be a part of the Albany Police Department because they believe that is, is a job that they can feel proud to undertake in Albany, we've got to have greater conversation. Someone talked about, this is one of those difficult conversations. Well, you got to have it. Cannot abandon the process. So as someone who sat here for many months and worked on this legislation and actually received an award from the MetroLand back in 2000 when this was established, I'm very proud of the work that we did back then, and I don't want to see it lost. So I ask that you would just please continue to work on that. Another thing I want to come down and talk about, the speed tickets. I get a ticket a week. I don't know about anybody else's experience, but I've had to change my route to get home-
One minute remaining.
And I'm not the only one, I know, that is experiencing this. When I was making phone calls over the last several months, people, seniors, and I'm a senior myself, I'm proud to say, have told me they have to change where they go to the pharmacy, they have to change how they go and do their shopping, because this is a problem. All I'm asking you to do is give me a review of what, other than tell me that you got four million dollars, tell me something else that can make people feel comfortable that this is working, other than just get fifty dollars, thirty-five dollars go into a vendor, fifteen dollars go into a city, you got a five-year contract where you can't change it. This is what I've been told. That just, that's, it's troublesome to me, and I ask that you just continue to review the process. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Can the clerk call next speaker?
Andrea Williamson.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say I second the notion of my councilman Johnson as far as the taxes being-
Can you just state your name and-
Oh, Andrea Wilkinson, Albany-
There you go.
Second District. I second the notion of the property taxes increase, increase, and last year I had like a 50%. My taxes have doubled. I just wrote out a check yesterday, Saturday, trying to meet the deadlines for school taxes, and unfortunately, I couldn't pay them all. I had to pick and choose which properties I would pay taxes on. I am on the South End. I'm a businessman on the South End. I own about 10 pieces of properties over there. I pay about property fifty grand a year over the 20-something years that I've been on the South End. I have concerns about the drug infestation, the prostitution, the homelessness, and the dirtiness that exists within the South End. And it's like from the foot of the bridge all the way over to Morton further down. And I want to say, what about us? What about the children that are on the South End? What about the single mothers with their children? And what about the small businesses that are on South Pearl? I had to pay $300 to get someone to clean up the back of my building the other day. Condom, feces, urine, needles, on top of me writing out a check on Saturday for about $20,000. I can't afford it. My tenants can't afford it, that when y'all increased upon me, I have to pass it on to them. Or if I, we don't get the services that we should receive, I have to come out of my pocket and pay more and therefore pass it on. I am trying to be, I am a good landlord, and I'm fair. I don't increase my tenants unless there's a need to do so, but with the taxes that are taking place, with the increases of the taxes in the City of Albany, and the lack of services on the South End, it's, it's a travesty. It's sad. It's so blazing. You get off the Clinton Avenue, and it's like you're in Manhattan somewhere. And then you get off at Madison, the roads are raggedy, garbage is everywhere, and I just am asking, please, share the wealth equally throughout the city. You have to take care of Arbor Hill. You have to take care of the South End. It can't just be you take care of the areas that you want to take care of. And I'll end on that. My other concern is, I'm a landlord that's going to Albany City Court, and I'm at the point where I'm putting y'all on notice, and I know y'all, it's the Unified Court Services or Unified Court, but I am sick of the abuse, the hostility, hostility, the aggressiveness that is being displayed and I am being subjected to from Judge Kelly. I have asked him to recuse himself on my cases because when he was corporate counsel, I sued Albany PD for wrongfully arresting me on my own property down on South Pearl. We went all the way to Utica, y'all had to settle, and y'all had to pay me. He was corporate counsel. He seriously has a conflict of interest, and he needs to not preside over any of my cases. My last case with him, he literally leaned over, pointed his finger at me, yelled and screamed at me, and demanded me to answer him, and my attorney was objecting, saying, she doesn't have to answer you. The level of hostility, the level, it's abusive to me now.
One minute remaining.
I'm asking y'all to please look into taking care, better care of the South End, clean it up with the drugs and the infestation, and I'm asking y'all to look at the tone of your judges that you have and your city court when it comes to landlord tenant. We have the right to be respected. We have the right to not be mistreated, and I feel like I'm being harassed, discriminated against, and his behavior is progressively getting aggressive. And I don't like it as a woman. I'm a woman of color. I find him to be quite intimidating. And I've asked Carolyn McLaughlin to speak with him, and she has, and I've asked my councilman to speak with him, and I do believe he has also. So I'm asking y'all to checkmate the tone that's in your city court when it comes to L and T, and especially me with Judge Kelly.
Thank you, ma'am. Time's up. Can the clerk call next speaker?
Gary Price.
Good evening. My name is Gary Price. Thank you for your time. I'm an Albany resident without a district because I'm currently without shelter. I'm otherwise known as homeless. I am a member of the National Union of the Homeless, which is a national organization that has a local chapter here in Albany. And there are several of my comrades, otherwise, who also belong, union members, with me today. So we're just here to let people know that we exist and that we're here in Albany, and we're trying to address the problem of homelessness, which is not going to get better. It's going to get worse before it gets better. So I hope that the next mayoral administration will have a point person on the subject of homelessness, and we would be very interested and happy and open to have communications with the mayor's office on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can the clerk call next speaker?
James Giacalone.
Good evening. My name is James Giacalone, and I'm a resident of the Second Ward. We all know that Albany is currently experiencing an affordable housing crisis. The response to an affordable housing crisis is not to eliminate protections that ensure a small fraction of new housing is affordable to the majority of residents. It's particularly absurd to be taking such an action one week after the County of Albany passed County Local Law G designating the development of affordable housing as a governmental and public purpose of the county, and less than two weeks after the election of a replacement for the mayor who repeatedly vetoed these exact affordable housing requirements. Let's not fool ourselves about how this amendment is going to work. Landlords are going to elect to have no affordable housing in their buildings because why would they choose to limit how much they can charge people? And then they're going to charge their tenants more to make up for the $10,000 that they had to pay the city in order to get that exemption from the affordability requirement. And in case that doesn't make a clear connection for you, this means the amendment will help people who can almost afford to buy a home, because that's where the money is going, is to those down payments, with money taken from people who aren't even close to being able to afford to buy a home because they're still renting. If you're going to give up on the affordable housing requirement, as it's currently written, you will hurt renters less by striking it completely than by taking on this amendment. Because either way, no developer who doesn't want to build affordable housing is going to, and under this amendment, money will also be siphoned from renters to new homebuyers and the financial groups that are giving them mortgages. New housing that isn't affordable drives up the cost of all housing, so just building more housing on its own doesn't help. The competition only drives down prices if the new prices are lower than the ones that are currently on the market. And there's no incentive to do that when not participating in the market means freezing to death, as we all would soon be doing over the next couple of months. Regulation is the only thing that can fix an unaffordable housing market. Let's not cut down the regulations that we have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can the clerk call next speaker?
Joseph Paparon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reverend Joe Paparon. I am an organizer and member of the National Union of the Homeless, the Nonviolent Medicaid Army, and the New York State Poor People's Campaign. And I just, before I get into what I was thinking I was going to say, I have to comment. It's really interesting, I think, for our outgoing mayor to take credit for raising the wages of the lowest-paid workers in the city. Correct me if I got my history wrong, but wasn't that a really drawn-out contract fight that those blue-collar workers had with this mayoral administration? I just, I need to put that out there because I think part of my role in the different spaces I organize is building power for the people. And that's what we've been doing in our chapter of the National Union of the Homeless for the last year, just over a year. We started meeting in July of last year. There were four people at our first meeting. Now, we've got over a dozen consistent members, another whole wider circle of people who are participating regularly, regularly in our actions. And what we've done is build power for the poorest and most marginalized in our city. We've been organizing. We had a number of our leaders advocate at the state level for the Housing Access Voucher Program, which was at least partially successful this year. We met with some of the mayoral candidates during the primary earlier this year, and we've conducted public outreach, talking to our neighbors, holding cookouts down by the river. Ultimately, I think one of the biggest things we're doing is challenging narratives about poverty and homelessness. We live in a society that is propagandized with anti-poor attitudes. We are taught from birth to hate the poor. It is the worst thing you could be in your life. It is the worst thing you could be in your life is poor. If you're poor, you must have screwed up. You did something wrong. And we are challenging that. We are saying there's a system that is making people poor. We're told, even by well-meaning people, what is communicated is that poor and especially homeless folks are incapable of doing anything, let alone organizing for power. We're either treated as charity cases, objects to be pitied and maybe tossed a few bones, or criminalized, objects of fear. And the folks in our union call nonsense on both of those narratives. By coming together, by learning together, by studying, by organizing together, we challenge those narratives. And I got to say, these are the toughest people I've ever met in my life. Some of our members slept outside every night last winter. I dare you to consider doing the same, right? And they are fighting not only for themselves, not only in their self-interest, but they are fighting for just and decent housing for everyone. This crisis is getting worse. I heard a few folks mention that earlier. The federal government and cuts the HUD, what we just saw was a taste of what's coming with these SNAP cuts. The SNAP cuts are actually going forward through work requirements. And we know that the city can't do everything. Last week, a number of our members spoke at the county legislature and will be back there as well as here. What we're calling on you all to do, knowing that you can't do everything, is prioritize, 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 ending homelessness and poverty. There are a lot of opportunities coming the way of the city of Albany, whether it's the cap funding, whether it's these things I've been seeing lately about reconnecting the plaza, and while I know this is more on the county side of things, the St. Rose Campus, which has empty dorm buildings. People are sleeping outside tonight and will be going forward while there are, there's room for everybody. This should be a moral outrage. We should be screaming from the rooftops to fix this. Y'all have done really good things around tenant protections and inclusionary zoning and I urge you to stay the course as best you can. We need fighters. If there are things that the city cannot do, it's okay. Say that and then tell us, what are you going to do to fight for the things that you need? We will, we will be with you. If you want to march on the state Capitol and demand that the state do something, we're there. We're already there. That's what we've been fighting for and organizing for. We need visionary leadership. I, I, I'm so glad y'all deal with this budget stuff. It is not my thing. I'm a pastor. Obviously, moral reframing is my thing. So thank you for all the hard work you put into this budget and assessing and analyzing and figuring out the nuts and bolts. But I want to be really clear about some hard facts, that there are our neighbors and my friends who are sleeping outside and it ain't right and it doesn't need to be this way and we can fix this together. Expand inclusionary zoning. The, the goal should be 100% inclusionary zoning, right? Nobody lacking housing due to their ability to pay. If we got all these vacant buildings, how about a vacancy tax, right? That, that would be a real targeted tax on people who are not contributing in the ways that we need them to in our city right now. Lastly, I want to just extend an invitation. Kelly and Jack met with us last year. They came to our breakfast. Thank you. I want to extend that invitation to you all. Please feel free to reach out to us. Come talk with us. Let's work on this stuff together. We're struggling and striving to solve these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Krista Adroy.
Good evening. My name is Krista Adroy. I reside at 98 Columbia Street, member of War III, and I'm here to talk about inclusionary How can we expect tenants in the city of Albany to afford luxuriously priced apartments, which are a result of no regulation, when a majority of the tenants in the city are paying more than 30% of their income on rent? The average monthly income of a UTA assisted tenant household was $1,683 and the household size was of two people. The fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment in the city of Albany is now going for $1,207, meaning those tenants have $476 left over for food, necessities, utilities, transportation, et cetera. A majority of Albany tenants cannot afford fair market rent and fair market rents rise significantly in comparison to wages, which scarcely rise. The Albany Housing Authority waitlist is years, years, years long. There are not enough Section 8 vouchers and the HUD funding that UTA had, which was supposed to temporarily subsidize low-income tenants within the city, was cut off by the Trump administrations and tenants have nowhere to turn. The idea that housing developers will consider the needs of the community they're building in is simply untrue. If developers instinctively felt to do that, we would have affordable housing built everywhere already, but we do not. And inclusionary zoning would not be a need, but it is. Time and time again, we see luxury complexes being built where there is no regulation because developers will take advantage for profits and high returns. It is the job of the city to protect tenants from price gouging developers and since we have no, no choice when it comes to working with developers that care about profit more than they care about the community, the only way of doing that while also meeting the needs of the tenants is through regulation. Aside from taking a financial burden off of tenants, inclusionary zoning brings more people to businesses within the community, which in turn aids the city's economy. When rent isn't affordable, it leads to eviction, homelessness, and more funding being spent on shelters and temporary housing over stable, long-term housing. Inclusionary zoning allows Albany to continue building towards a city that meets the community where they are. It allows families to thrive by not facing the enormous hardship that comes with homelessness or staying in shelters. It allows members of all communities to have access to a better education, gives families more job opportunities, and stabilizes communities and homes. So I urge you not to overturn inclusionary zoning. Thank you.
Richard Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Richard Johnson. When Joe was speaking about homeless people, he was speaking about me. I was behind a state legislative building for months because I'd h one at 90% of my income. But they didn't give me 90% of anything. I had to fight for everything. I've been fighting all my life. When am I going to be able to stop fighting? Not until the last homeless person is put in a casket. Well, I give up, man. I can't do it. It, it's against everything I love. First off, I'm a Brooklyno and the people from Brooklyn don't give up. I was brought up with a mother, my father died when I was 12 years old. The street became my father. And common sense told, after three state bids, after three state bids, I finally put the guns and the, and the drugs down. But I can't get no, I can't get no resolution to this. It's crazy that me and you have the same last name. I'm a Johnson, you're a Johnson. The only, only thing is the color of the skin, man. Come on, man. These people are outside fighting for their lives and we're in here arguing about a budget. Come on, man. It's got to be better than this. I've been fighting all my life. I'm 57 years old now. I broke my leg in the parking garage. They told me I would never walk again. Well, I got up with this beautiful leg that the guy gave me. With the beautiful leg that the guy gave me and he's dead now and I'm still alive. So I got to keep moving. I can't stop, won't stop. I got to get it, get it. The same way as if I was out there getting it in the street, the same way I got to get it in here. I got to fight for people that don't want to fight for theirselves. It's crazy, but it's true. Why are we fighting against each other, right? To get housing? No, man. It shouldn't be this hard, man. It should be different, man. You know what I'm saying? When I grew up as a kid, I used to like Albany, man, but then, when I came up here from Brooklyn, New York, Albany was like wide open. You didn't have to worry about going on people's property and getting thrown off. In Brooklyn and Bensonhurst, they had, they had gated communities where people couldn't go in. If you went in on that block, your ass was out of there, they would, they would beat you off the block. In Albany, you could just lay back and relax and enjoy the city, right? But you can't enjoy the city if you're in the cold. Because I don't like the cold. I don't like the cold, man. I'd rather have the heat than the cold. But here's what we got to do, man. We got to come up with a simple solution because Craig Apple just took it upon himself to move up into the, into the St. Rose College campus. We didn't have a say in that. Well, Dan McCoy should have jumped on him and told him he couldn't do that. But instead, homeless people are still in the street, man. And then the people, the merchants on Lark Street, they complain because the homeless population is keeping the consumers away from the stores. I had a man tell me that I couldn't do my laundry in the laundromat because I was homeless. I said, I'll call Trump, Donald Trump on you, bro. That's what I'll do. I'll call Trump. Trump is stronger than you are. You ain't going to tell me I can't do my laundry in here? I'll call the cop, call whoever you want, man. Call whoever you want. But homeless, the homeless population needs help, man. They said that the homeless people are drug addicts. No, man. No, not all of them. Some of them are, I agree with that, but not all of them. The buck's got to stop here, man. We shouldn't be paying, we shouldn't be paying for people, families, we shouldn't be paying families for inmates getting beat up in Albany County Jail. That's what Craig Apple should be worried about. Paying those families instead of taking my money after I retired to pay for those families. No, man, I'm not accepting that. That's the same thing I told him at the other meeting, the legislature, state legislative meeting. I'm not accepting.
One minute remaining.
I'm not accepting that, man. I'm going to keep fighting, man. Eventually, we're going to get a better future.
Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Maria Markovik.
Hi. I'm Maria Markovik and I still live at 38 Merle Avenue. So I'm here on behalf of Housing For All and we're strongly opposed to repealing the existing inclusionary housing ordinance. There's been a lot of misconceptions going around and, you know, this ordinance has been blamed for everything from like cracked sidewalks to the demise of the central warehouse. So I think it's time we start to look at stuff and we agree with Alfredo that we need to have a real discussion, which has not happened. The ordinance is viewed as some kind of radical piece of housing, you know, because it, it says that 7% of units goes from 7% with buildings with 20 or more up to 13% for buildings with 76 or more. And that's viewed as very, very radical. Well, actually nationally, in the 300 inclusionary housing programs, 16% affordable housing set aside is the norm. Secondly, the mayor has said that the 2023 ordinance lowered the income threshold for affordable units, making it even harder for developers to do housing. So the 2017 ordinance was set at 100% of the Albany median income, which is about $48,000. The 2023 ordinance is set at 60% of the area median income, which is $48,500. They're the same. So I, I think in the ordinance you're proposing, it calls for 100% of the area median income, which would be crazy because that would be $117,800. So that's not the audience you're trying to address. So there is no difference in income between the 2017 and the 2023. So the mayor has also said that there's been no more development since the ordinance was passed. And she sent out, I think, two letters to that effect. She said, pre-2023, there was an average of 300 units a year. And then '23 on, it's gone, one said 250 units, another said 200 units a year. I mean, really, it seems unclear how many units have come on the market. I mean, you know, she dismisses high interest rates, but I don't think you can dismiss that. And the other thing is that, you know, the big box, there's been a saturation of $2,500 a month, big box apartment complexes. And, you know, you know, that could be why they're not jumping to do a lot more. But obviously though, aside from that, the demand has not stopped. So, you know, inclusionary zoning is an important tool and probably the only tool for creating economically integrated housing. It isn't like high-rise here and low-income housing here. In an inclusionary unit, building of 100, 13 of those units will be for moderate income people. They will be for the people who are making the $48,500, the people who work for the city of Albany, who are, you know, are, are, you know, nursing assistants, the people, school attendants. And certainly throwing out inclusionary zoning and putting in place an opt-out for developers where they can pay $5,000 or $10,000 into a fund is really a cop-out. Because you know full well, those developers are getting far more in taxpayer subsidies that extend for some time than the $5,000 or $10,000 per unit that this fund would create. So we agree, there needs to be a discussion. And, you know, Housing For All is open for discussion. But it's, so far, what's happened is it's been more of an attack than a discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Marley.
Okay.
Time's up. Thank you so much.
I was ready, just getting ready to my closing line, but.
Sorry. Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Canyon Ryan.
Good evening again. I also commend you all for how much time this meeting is taking and the many meetings that you all sit through. My name's Canyon Ryan. I'm the executive director of United Tenants of Albany. I live at 25 North Pine Ave. Congrats as well to those who were re-elected and farewell to those who have retired from the common council for now. I'm also here to talk about inclusionary zoning and like Maria, I feel like this has not been a conversation. Parties have definitely spoken, but they haven't spoken to each other and this council has been very open and willing to have conversations with the administration, but they've not been responded to with times to meet. And suddenly, there's this big rush to repeal inclusionary zoning and to me, it's like, well, what is the rush? Well, the rush is likely to capitalize Albany, Albany's potential funding, this 250-plus million dollars coming down the pike to stir local and ideally social development. And the developers are salivating at the opportunity for this free money in addition to the pilots and other subsidies that Maria talked about, that this cap will hold to further fatten their pockets. And inclusionary zoning is indeed a limitation on how much profit that they're going to make because it means that low-income tenants will benefit from lower rents. And this grants those tenants the same luxuries afforded to those who can afford dignified, safe, and new housing. Market rate housing is absolutely unattainable to the majority of tenants in our city. I cannot afford it and I am an executive director. I'm not the most well-paid executive director, but I can afford new housing. And that's not just me, it's the majority of our tenants. And the truth is that this housing is not intended for the people who live in the city of Albany. And I mean that because we keep talking about growing our population and it's these prospective yuppies that will hopefully multiply our population at the expense of those who live here now and those who are being left out of this conversation now as well. Those who stand to benefit from all the new development we are anticipating and who will finally be able to escape, or sorry, those who have been excluded from this conversation are those who would benefit from, who do benefit from this policy and would finally be able to escape the substandard housing that myself and other tenants that I work with face every day if this cap funding is materialized with inclusionary zoning standing because all this new development will benefit tenants who live here now. But, you know, they're getting all this, the developers are getting all this money, free money from the state and then we're fighting to, you know, the ideal of this repeal and so that they also won't have to provide affordable housing for the tenants who live here now. And this proposal is not just a step back to where we started either. It's actually two steps back because when the 2023 inclusionary zoning law was passed, It's actually two steps back because when the 2023 inclusionary zoning law was passed, we went from, as Maria said, one hundred percent of the city median income to sixty percent of the area median income, which is a different metric and was comparable, as Maria said, to the 2019 version. But the language change in this repeal or amendment changes that sixty percent of AMI to one hundred percent the area median income, which is actually a lot different than the one hundred percent city median income. So basically, what that means is if landlords don't pay to escape inclusionary zoning, then the inclusionary zoning that they do provide is actually for people who have a much higher income than who would benefit from inclusionary zoning now or who benefited from it in 2019. So now we're talking about tenants who make eighty thousand dollars being the one hundred percent area median income who would benefit from this new inclusionary zoning as proposed in this repeal, assuming that landlords, it's just, it's kooky. And it's actually a really big difference because if a landlord can charge the going rent for a tenant who has an area median income of one hundred percent, then they actually don't need to opt out of the inclusionary zoning because the rent is gonna be the same as any other tenant because it's not for low-income tenants anymore. It's for tenants who have one hundred percent the area median income, which is Albany, Schenectady, and Rensselaer County income, very different than the city of Albany. So they actually don't even have to pay to exempt themselves because the rent will be the same as it would be for fair-market rent tenants, which is just, it's a really big difference. So it actually does not address the inclusionary zoning question at all if a landlord pays. I hope that that's really clear. I know I'm kind of like all over the place, but it's a huge difference. So the last part here is that with this payout, if a landlord, if a developer says, "Oh, I don't wanna have to provide affordable housing to people with one hundred percent the area median income" and they pay the city of Albany, that money will go to a bunch of homeownership programs, which is a completely different demographic than those who would benefit from inclusionary zoning now. So now we're talking about homeowners and homeownership grants rather than programs for tenants like the affordable housing that's provided through inclusionary zoning. So this repeal doesn't actually address the issue at all and the benefits of the repeal don't benefit tenants either.
Thank you. Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Tandra Legrone.
Good evening. I'm here, Tandra Legrone, CEO of Inner Own Voices. I want to first thank the council for bringing up the resolution for T-Dore Trans Day of Remembrance. I think Richard Conti will be doing that resolution a little bit later. Is that true? Soon, soon. One of the things I want to highlight is where we are as it impacts our LGBTQ plus individuals, including myself. We are at a time currently that we are living under an administration that is actively seeking to not only erase my existence, but the existence of my community and the community that I belong to. I am very fortunate to be an Albanian, which I love, but there are a lot of individuals, including within the capital region, that are, that do not have that convenience of being Albanian and being supported by the city of Albany. For years, the city of Albany has provided a safe haven for LGBTQI-plus individuals. So what this resolution means at a time right now in 2025, it means that not only are LGBTQI-plus, but transgendered and gender non-conforming and non-binary individuals are being seen, being heard, and given the message that they matter and this is important. The other, the other part that I want to bring up, that I brought up last year, was that we also have to acknowledge that there is still a safety issue, a huge safety issue for our trans, transgender, non-conforming, and non-binary individuals. We cannot be remiss not to name Assid Hemenway Powell, who was brutally murdered. I would be remiss not to mention Dominique Ely, who was murdered as well. These were cruel acts of violence just, just targeted for who they were as individuals and human beings. So what this resolution means, not only for the residents of the city of Albany, it sends a message across not only the capital region, but throughout the country to say, "We see you, you matter, and we're going to fight for you." "We're gonna fight for you in this current administration and we're gonna continue to fight for you ongoing." So I wanna thank you all for putting this resolution forward because it means so much to so many people. And I'm gonna end there. The other topic that I want to bring is that housing, I would be remiss if I sat here as a CEO of an organization that is in the, that is in the midst of building a new LGBT center right here in the city of Albany that will also include rapid and transitional housing. As you know, on last Thursday, the COC, the HUD, NOFO came out. And I will sit here and tell you, in next year, twenty-twenty-six, twenty September or October towards the end, we are going to see a shift in the amount of people that will be left out and without housing. This is a crisis. And we can't, we have to continue to have this conversation. It's a, this is unheard of. So please continue to keep that on your agenda. I appreciate each and every one of you for all of your support and thank you for having me.
Thank you. That is the final speaker that signed up tonight for public comment period. This coming public, you have your hand up?
I hope that you put me on the list when I spoke about-
Oh, you wanted to be on the public comment?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, well, come, come, come. Were you, we, we, she, no, she did say, "If I, if I speak on public hearing, can I speak later?" And I, and it's, yes, she could. I thought she had already was on the-
To get on-
Oh, you called her? Oh, she mustn't hear your name. Oh, she said no? Oh, you did call her, see?
It's been a very long night for everybody. So thank you again for letting me speak. I want to speak about ordinance twenty-five-one-oh-one-twenty-five to amend three-seventy-five, chapter three-seventy-five of the USDO to change the zoning classification of five-forty Morris Street. The request is to change a two-unit, which is an R-two, to a multi-unit and it's listed as MU-R-m and then to amend the zoning map accordingly. So just for the record, the city tax rolls list five-forty as a one-unit dwelling. So how can you vote on it as a two-unit dwelling to make it a more multi-unit dwelling? I looked at the, the street and looked at the housing on it and most of these properties are owned by LLCs and I'm just wondering, are people coming in and taking advantage of Albany housing for their cash cows? And then why do we need to change zoning? This is like a spot zoning change. Why do we need to bring it before the common council to have this zoning changed? So I wanna, you know, like piggyback into this. Well, first of all, you shouldn't do that until you get it straightened out. This is a one-family that is being represented as a two-family, which wants to morph into a multifamily and then just change the whole tax map. So I wanna bring also up ordinance twenty-six-one-oh-one-twenty-five to amend chapter two-thirty-one of housing by adding new part seven, requiring disclosure of beneficial owners of LLC companies and other entities that hold residential property in the city of Albany. And I really appreciate that Mr. Ballerin is presenting that and I was really dismayed to see all of these houses owned by people that don't live in our city, don't even live in our state, and the rest are LLCs. Who are these people? Just, I'm gonna ask you to get that straightened out before we do anything because this is a mess. It, it shouldn't, it should not be like this. You cannot pass zoning laws and update different zoning properties if they're incorrect already. So please clear it up, bring it back for another day, and I'll still say the same thing. Let's see who the people are that own these LLCs. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Kimbrough. Approval of minutes from previous meeting?
Yes, thank you, sir. Mr. President, I offered a November third of 2025 meeting minutes for approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of minutes passes. Mr. Kimbrough, you wanted to take certain ordinances and resolutions out of order.
Yeah, what was that number, Richard?
You, you wanted to take-
No, no, I-
Uh, one, one-thirty-one, one-twelve, twenty-five?
Yep, okay, motion to take one-
Ordinance twenty-seven, resolution one-
Oh, oh, you want me to do all of those? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, resolution one-twenty-three, you stated one-twenty-five, one-thirty-two, and one-thirty-one.
Yes, motion to take those out of order, twenty-seven, one-
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any discussion? Motion passes. So we'll start with ordinance twenty-
So, resolution, Mr. Conti's resolution.
Oh, you wanna do Mr. Conti's?
That's-
Okay. Can a clerk, Mr. Conti?
Okay, may I start? Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I offer resolution one-thirty-one point one-twelve point twenty-five R and ask its, for its passage and a vote thereon.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the common council recognizing transgender day of remembrance and honoring the lives lost to anti-violent, anti-transgender violence, excuse me.
Thank you. Discussion on this resolution, Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to thank Ms. Tandra Legrone, we all know Tandra, for addressing us earlier. Inner Own Voices is one of the premier organizations really providing services to the trans community here in the capital region and I really can't say it better than her. This, this resolution speaks to a community that is in many ways under siege by what's going on on the federal level in so many different, different ways of being targeted. I spoke to this issue in March when we passed the transgender day of remembrance resolution. It's the same here. This, in the past, we've routinely passed this resolution and others, but it's more important now than ever, as I've said before, that this is more symbolic. It is a strong statement from this council. It's an affirmation of our support for, for a part of our community here in the city of Albany, of our support and of our welcoming. So what we did in March and even our, the local law amendment to the city charter that we adopted last week or at our last meeting similarly sent a message as that we are a welcoming city for all. So again, I want to thank Tandra. I want to just reiterate that this is more than a symbolic vote. It is a very public affirmation of our support for the trans community and for the broader LGBTQ community, which is also part of my community, and the importance of our passage and continuing to be a voice in support of the communities that experience and suffer oppression. So I would appreciate your support for this tonight and I do have a copy, if we pass, that I would like to present. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing everyone is a co-sponsor, this will be a voice vote. Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Mr. Don? Moving right along to the other ordinances, resolutions we are taking out of order. We're going to ordinance, we're going to ordinance held. And ordinance twenty, well, we're taking them out of order. They wanted them out of order. So Ms. Frederick? No problem. I just do what I'm told.
We're starting with twenty-seven, correct?
Huh?
Twenty-seven, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, I move to amend ordinance twenty-seven-one-oh-one-twenty-five in the form circulated to members and made available to the public this evening, including the following changes. I'm gonna talk us through these line items since they were not in the ordinance that was passed out of committee. First, an increase to common council office equipment in the amount of one thousand five hundred. An increase to common council contracted services for the commission on disability services of one thousand. Increase to the city clerk for furnitures and fixtures of three thousand. A decrease to street lighting utilities of one hundred thousand. Decrease to public works, DGS hourly, one hundred thousand. Decrease to public works, DGS motor vehicle repairs, fifty thousand. Decrease to election, city sheriff-county elections expense, forty thousand. Decrease to office equipment admin services, twenty-eight thousand. Decrease to common council training and conferences, two thousand five hundred. For a total general fund expenditure amendment decrease of three thousand fifteen. In addition- One second.
No problem. I'm not gonna say anything about the Cowboys game yet.
One second, we have a total amount expenditure variance here. I just wanna make sure we have the right figures. Can we, I, can we respectfully move to local laws as we sort through this?
Can you hold off on this? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So we'll go to the next, what, do you think you have it done in thirty seconds? We do? Oh, yeah. Yes, we'll take a, a five-minute recess. Council members, take a five-minute recess until they get their stuff together. Thank you. Be back at nine.
of Albany budget for fiscal year 2026 as presented by the mayor on October 1st, 2025, and as amended by the common council therein.
Thank you. Ms. Fredericks, and then Mr. Howie, I want you to have at it. Oh, you don't want to go ahead, Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a long night, so, thank you, everyone. All right, tonight we are voting on a budget that reflects careful work, analysis, and collaboration. As finance chair, I'm proud of the approach that we took this season rooted in responsibility and transparency. We began this budget season with known challenges, rising costs, inflationary pressures, a year in both in which both property taxes and curbside collection fee were set to increase. We also heard the concerns from our constituencies who already feel the weight of rising costs in every part of their lives. That's why we, as the common council, made affordability our central focus for this year's budget. Through our review and targeted amendments, we are able to reduce the property tax levy by five percent, easing some of the burden on our residents at a time when it matters most. While this reduction may sound small on paper, for some families, that balance rising cost of housing, food, and utilities costs, every bit of relief counts. In good faith, we work with the administration to come up with a compromise here. We have heard one of the number one issues of our residents is affordability. Some can say that this decrease is not worth the squeeze, but if you are on a fixed income, truly every dollar counts, and that is what we focus on as a body. I want to express my gratitude to my colleagues on the finance committee and the council for their engagement and thoughtful contributions throughout this process, to our budget office, department staff, and the administration for their support. While this budget is not perfect, no budget ever is, but it's one that balances fiscal sustainability with the lived reality of our residents. For these reasons, I'll be voting in favor of this budget, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Mr. Anani. You don't want to give your budget speech? Okay. Ms. Keegan.
No, I just want to thank Sonia for, um, the chair of finance committee, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. No, I just want to really thank, uh, the chair of the finance committee and the finance committee members for all their hard work over the past couple of months. And, uh, again, this is not a budget that, um, you know, it's not a great budget, but again, like I say, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This budget is a step in the right direction, and I look forward to supporting, and I urge my colleagues to do the same.
Ms. Keegan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I want to lift up Councilmember Anani's words, um, in praise of Councilmember Frederick and all of the work that she has done, um, on behalf of the city during the last four years, leading us through, um, very, very difficult budget sessions. She has been selfless in this process. She has put in a lot of hard work and dedication, um, and she is just such a wonderful asset to us. I'm sad to see you go, but I am so thankful for the work that you've done and the work that you did to get this budget over the hump. Um, we oftentimes are a little spicy, and she definitely has tolerated all of our varying personalities, um, and managed to get us to compromise on some really difficult issues. Um, and so, thank you. You should be proud of this legislation and of this bill and of getting us to this point, especially given our really short timeframe this year.
Ms. Zamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to briefly thank the finance committee members who I attended, uh, the meetings I could attend, the others I watched, uh, virtually if I couldn't be here in person. And, um, I felt you asked all the questions that I needed to have answered. You were thorough, um, you worked so hard, um, behind the scenes. And to Chairwoman Frederick, um, once again, you led us through this process with skill and grace, and you'll be deeply missed, uh, by this body in our next term. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell, and then Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I wanted to thank my colleagues on the finance committee, um, councilmembers Adams, Ballerin, Keegan, and of course, our Chair, Councilmember Frederick, for the many, many hours of meetings. It is not easy to be on the finance committee, and it is, but it's also one of the most important functions that we can do as a council member. Um, the process, the budget process is the opportunity for us to really go through each part, each department, and ask the questions that need to be asked. We are the sunlight on the budget, and, um, and we're fortunate that we've been able to partner with the administration because not every administration allows so much sunlight, and I, I feel comfortable that we will be able to continue to have that much sunlight with the new administration as well. Um, and I, huge thanks to Councilmember Frederick. It has been an absolute honor to serve with you, and I, um, we will definitely miss you here, especially during budget, but you can, like, send us selfies while you're doing something fabulous else. Um, but your intelligence, your hard work, um, the way that you calmly go through every facet diligently, we just, we so appreciate you. So, thank you so much for all that you've given, every budget process, but, um, this one was more difficult than some have been in the past, and, um, you've still shown up with grace and diligence and hard work, and you're just so appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howie, and then Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you. Um, I want to say thank you to the committee and to you, Jenny. I know you didn't thank yourself, so I had to give you a thank you, but especially Sonia, I mean, you did a great job. Um, it was so much fun, I came to almost every meeting because it was better than watching TV, but seriously, it, it's great to see how the city works, to hear where we're going to spend the money, have department heads come in, and thank you for, uh, shepherding us to this point, and, uh, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Ballerin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo the statements that have already been said by my colleagues. Many thanks to all the committee members, all the members who are not on the committee but still attended regularly, and to all the members that have asked questions, put in, uh, requests and put in information, uh, thank you for that. Thank you to also Gideon, uh, our Budget Director, uh, for his many, many nights here with us, and the many gray hairs, and I'm sure we've given him to the process, uh, and the administration for their work with us and, uh, trying to find a compromise. Of course, I really do have to give my greatest thanks to our outgoing Chair, Sonia Frederick, uh, for the many, many years of service that she's given to our city, to the many, many hours that she's given, uh, through this process throughout those years, the difficult phone calls, the difficult, uh, someone said spicy, and I think we are a little spicy, uh, but, uh, personalities that she's balanced and, uh, different perspectives and different views that she's been able to honestly take in and, and do the best she could to get people, uh, closer to where they were looking to be. Um, and that balance, uh, will be truly, truly missed, uh, that dedication and that willingness to go behind the scenes and have those tough conversations, uh, that nobody else sees, uh, has always been appreciated, and just want to let you know, we, I wish you the best in all your future, uh, adventures, and again, I also look forward to seeing many, many, many successful days ahead for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, Mr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I want to add my accolades to, uh, Councilmember Frederick and the, the finance committee for the work they did. Um, it's important. I, I know one of the frustrations we often have, uh, finance members and other members of the council is sometimes limitations we have in terms of what we can do with the budget, and, uh, one of the tasks, I think, for, for the next council is to really seriously take a look at that, uh, to see what our authority is and where, uh, where we can, uh, make some revisions so we have, uh, and we can play an important role. That being said, the process that we have is valuable. Um, the meetings that we have with department heads is important. We didn't always have that when I first came on board many, many years ago. Uh, but, you know, I always tell new members especially, if you want to understand how city government works and what departments do, pay attention to the budget, and come to the budget meetings and listen to the departmental presentations, and that's where you learn how, how government works, what the various departments, uh, do, and when you need something, where you go, and how you, what, what are the pressure points. Uh, so, those, those hearings, uh, and those interactions, they were important interactions with department heads are, are important, uh, because we learn, the public learns, um, and departments also understand and learn what constituent concerns are, which we translate into, into as well. Uh, but again, I want to, uh, express my appreciation, you know, coming back here after a hiatus, uh, for the work that Councilmember Frederick did. Um, there is life after this council, uh, so, uh, best wishes, uh, for your, your service on this body, uh, and, uh, thank you for what you did, uh, with this budget as well. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
I'm going to keep this brief. I just want to say thank you, um, because the chair that you, uh, replaced, your comments were a lot quicker and faster than, um, Judy, you know, I appreciated Judy, but, um, you, you did the job in, in less words, and, and a lot of times that was appreciated. Um, so, I just want to say thank you. Unfortunately, I will not be supporting it, but you know, it has nothing to do with you or the effort of the committee. Um, I feel strongly about, um, when I did used to come and listen to the department heads and, and, and the, um, the connection that I have with the cities, a lot of times I can hear when they just talking, and, um, I just want to say thank you for your, um, service, and thank you, um, to the, uh, finance committee, um, members.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Well, I'd like to just say, um, thank you to the finance committee, and thank you to our finance chair, uh, who has a bright future in front of her. Thank you for your service, uh, to the finance committee. Thank you for your service to the City of Albany. Uh, this is the final budget that she will oversee, uh, and this budget, um, hit hard, but it was necessary, uh, and we've dealt, this council dealt with, uh, budgets in the past, hard budgets, and made hard, tough decisions, and, uh, I will hope that every council member does support this budget. Um, your finance chair and your council members, they worked hard, uh, to try to come up with a compromise, and I believe that's what, uh, being in office is about. It's about compromising sometimes, uh, and the city administration have shown throughout the 12 years that they recognize keeping spending down, keeping taxes down, and also have recognized when council members, uh, wanted things in their communities such as parks and those improvements, and so, we cannot overlook that. So, this one year where, you know, the percentage was a little bit higher than most, uh, we can't overlook that we got here not just because of, uh, today, uh, but of what COVID did to us. Uh, COVID, as I said earlier, COVID didn't allow us to really try to phase in this, uh, this, uh, trash tax. Uh, we had to do it at this moment. Um, I believe it puts us on, uh, the future for the next mayor, um, budget that will help them, uh, shape the city in their vision and help them, uh, accomplish those things that they need to accomplish. And I think it would also, with the addition of the jobs that are added, it's going to show a more communicative, um, administrative, because, and we said this at the budget hearing meeting, when your, uh, when your chief of staff is handling communications and handling community, is handling, things get lost, and, 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 and it's a tough job when one person is doing the job of three, and we have to move forward as a city. Uh, and that is moving forward as a city with these, with the new, uh, jobs, uh, that are put in the administrative, uh, mayor's office. It's moving the city forward. Changes, tough. Changes hard, but changes needed, and so, uh, we must keep those things in mind, uh, and, um, I, I am so honored to, when I saw every budget hearing and, and saw council members trying to put money in and figure out, um, not just this year, but other years as well, um, that's how government is supposed to work. I sat on the council for four years, it did not work like that. It did not. Uh, there was a gentleman years ago called Democracy in Albany, and he started this online, uh, conversation about democracy in Albany, and at the time he was writing that, he didn't believe there was democracy in Albany. I sit here today in 2025, in the last eight years, and even before I came back to the council, four years prior to me coming back, I saw democracy happen in Albany. Does there need to be some changes? Absolutely. Absolutely. Does need probably some charter changes? Absolutely, but you guys will work through that, you'll work with your next mayor, and you'll figure it out. Democracy is in Albany, because democracy in Albany didn't veto or override mayor's vetoes in the past. Democracy in Albany did not question, uh, the mayor's budget in fear of retaliation. You guys can question the mayor's budget, and that door was still open, and there was no retaliation for it, because that's democracy. And so, uh, with this budget, I hope, uh, council members will support it, and, uh, and those who are going to be here for the next budget, democracy is in Albany, and it's in your hands as coun- as leg- as, as city councilmen, as legislators. So, with that being said, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Fourteen, yes, one, no.
Ordinance passes. Moving on to, uh, resolutions taken out of order, uh, 123, let me get my, um, who's that? Sorry. What you do? I'm out of order myself now. Um, Councilman Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 123, 10125, and asks for its passage, passage by roll call vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council establishing the locally adjusted base proportions of the homestead and non-homestead classes for property tax purposes pursuant to Article 19 of the real property tax law.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll? Yes.
Adams.
Oh, sorry.
You're good, you're okay. Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Far- Farrell.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Resolution passes. Continuing on, uh, Resolution 132. Councilman Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend Resolution 132, 11225R in the form circulated to members and made available to the public this evening, including the following changes. On page two, under Property Tax Levy, Levy and Revenue Streams subsection, we have changed the prop- property tax levy amount to 2.5%, noting a 0.5% reduction. On page three, under Safety in Our Communities, fifth paragraph, we have added a new paragraph in relations to insurance funds recouped from damaged police vehicles, urging the new administration to, uh, look to give those recouped funds back to the Albany Police Department as opposed to general insurance recovery so that they can use those funds to purchase new police vehicles and ultimately decrease the amount of debt that we authorize for those purchases. Um, everything else stayed consistent from what we have passed, um, the following Thursday in, in Finance Committee.
Discussion on those amendment. All those in favor, all those opposed? Motion on amendments pass, so, it's Ms., uh, Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 132, 11225R as amended this evening and asks for its passage by roll call vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council outlining its actions and expressing its findings and intent concerning the City of Albany's 2026 budget and pro- as proposed in ordinance 27, 10125.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
This brother, use your bass.
Just use your bass, I, I can hear you.
I got a, I got a mic.
Okay. Dramatic effect.
Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
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 Howie.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes, yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Fifteen, any affirmative?
Resolution passes. Now, we'll move back to our normal agenda, considerations of local laws. Going to local laws introduced. Uh, Ms., Ms. Zamer, oh, no, Local Law D, sorry. Why's that? Why does that say MC? Ms., no, D. Curbside waste. Okay, Ms. Zamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I notice Local Law F of 2025 as amended and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending Part 41, Commissions on Monuments and Public Art of Chapter 42, Departments and Commission of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the scope of the commission's responsibility and authority.
Thank you, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. To referral to the council's law committee.
Thank you. Continuing on with local laws, uh, local laws held. Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend Local Law C of 2025 to add appropriate lines for the present pro temp and, pro temp and the majority leader. Uh, because this is a local law, it will need to age and will not be voted on this evening.
Thank you. Any discussion on this amendment? All right, uh, all those in, those opposed to this amendment? Seeing none, amendment passes. Thank you. Moving on, continuing on with local laws, uh, held. Ms. Fredericks.
Thank you. I notice Local Law D of 2025 and ask for its passage by roll call vote.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the local law?
A local law amending the curbside waste collection fee.
Discussion on this local law. Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll? Oh, Mr. Conti, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Way back in 2016, I was charged, you might say, with, uh, shepherding the original local law through this council, was not a pleasant task. Uh, back then, there was some thought, uh, as it was structured back then, that we would review the, uh, the, the, uh, the collection fee annually and, and adjust it based on the costs, um, and that became controversial, and, you know, at some point, we just did the flat fee and then moved forward, which we're now doubling it for whatever reasons. But, that aside, my, my concern with, uh, this, this fee, and I, and I will vote, I'm voting for it, uh, but I, I really think we need to, uh, reexamine, uh, the whole topic of how we deal with trash and the incentives, and the, uh, the budget intent memo has some discussion on that, but we are not, as city government, we are not, you know, we, we shouldn't be putting ourselves, uh, comparing ourselves to private haulers who don't care about waste reduction but simply charge a fee, uh, to, to take the trash away and dump it wherever they dump it. As city government, we have a responsibility in some way, uh, to provide incentives, uh, to reduce the amount of waste that is produced, uh, and that, um, that our citizens now pay for, uh, to take, take away. Um, my biggest complaint about this, this is a one-size-fits, fits-all fee, which is unfair, uh, because not all of us generate the same amount of trash as others do, whether it's based on family size, whether it's based on more attentitiveness to, say, reduce, reuse, uh, you know, uh, recycle. Um, we need to move to a system, and especially as we're going, the landfill closes and we're moving to a system where it's going to be much more costly to dispose of our waste, we need, we need to move to a system which provides incentives to reduce the amount of waste, uh, that's generated and disposed of, uh, and how it's disposed of. We need to look at issues like packaging, we need to support state legislation that reduces packaging, but we really need to begin to look at incentives. Um, I've talked about, you know, uh, curbside, uh, pickup of composting, incentives for people who actually do composting now, and they, they pay to take, have it taken away in addition to the trash fee they pay. There are so many things that we should be looking at to really reduce the amount of trash, uh, and waste that we, uh, that we produce. In my household, we produce very little. We compost, we, I, you know, I, I put out trash once every other week, uh, based on different recycling and composting and things of that nature, but we need to do, we need to provide incentives, uh, and so, that's why merging the council, the future councils, to really seriously look at that issue, uh, beyond having, just having a flat fee that is a one-size-fits-all, that doesn't provide any incentive for waste reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Yes.
Anani.
No.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Flynn.
No.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough.
Yes.
Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Zamer.
Yes.
Twelve, any affirmative? Three, no.
Law passes. Continuing on, um, reports of any standing committees. Mr. Howie.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, Public Safety Committee, uh, met today at noon. I appreciate the committee members, uh, for coming at lunchtime and spending their lunch hour, um, interviewing three prospective, uh, applicants for the, uh, Community Police Review Board. All three were excellent, um, it was a hard decision, uh, to make because we only have two openings, and by the way, the mayor has three openings that, and some of them are two years old, but we'll leave it at that. So, we're hoping that with this, we'll be able to have a quorum, um, after the next meeting, if the council go ahead and vote for the two people that we recommend. We are going to have another meeting, I think tentatively, we're talking about December 10th, to have the police chief come in and, um, talk a little bit more about the incident that happened on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on Monday, November 10th to discuss the mayor's office presentation, Corporation Council, as well as Local Law C of 2025, in addition to overall budget amendments and changes, uh, that were discussed this evening. We also continued that discussion into Thursday, uh, November 13th, where we, uh, drafted the budget intent memo and the ordinance that was just voted on. Uh, in the future, we will be noticing a meeting within the month of December to discuss, have an overall discussion on our debt, um, and at that time, we will, uh, hopefully council members can join us, post that discussion, we will look to po- uh, pa- uh, vote on the bond ordinances, uh, prior to the end of this calendar year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn, and then Mr. Johnson.
Uh, the General Services Committee met November 5th to discuss Resolution 979125R and 1119225R, and both came out with favorable recommendations.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. President. Um, today, the Housing and Committee, Community Development Committee met, and we discussed the budget set it, um, set aside for housing, uh, related activities, and we're trying to come up with a plan to make sure that, that money goes to assist, uh, people who are helping some of our, um, families that are struggling with their rent in, um, the city court. Uh, we will meet again to, uh, finalize the, um, plans that we're going to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Further, um, now we'll hear from, uh, Mr. McGee.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I know it's late, but I did want to take a moment to talk about Resolution 121, 10125R concerning the eminent domain of Rap Road, which I'm hoping will be removed from, having been tabled at this, uh, later this evening. I wanted specifically, and we addressed a lot of this at caucus last week, so I'll I wanted specifically, and we addressed a lot of this at caucus last week, so I'll keep it very brief, but I wanted to address some of the comments brought up by Ms. Kukosko from Lomery Chrysler. So this negotiation has been going on for a very long time. I think the most recent phase began in April of '24, when they, around, it was around that time they entered into a right of first refusal with the city with respect to these properties. In that time, we've been attempting to negotiate with them for the purchase of the Rapp Road parcels. We need those parcels as part of our closing down of the landfill. The only way we can do that economically or feasibly is by building a transfer station on those particular parcels. We've had those properties appraised. The appraisal has come in. The appraisal did, in fact, include a highest best value analysis, contrary to what you were told tonight. We offered the owners of the property more than, you know, the offer would have been roughly twice the value of those properties. They ceased negotiating, they had ceased negotiating with us at that point. That brought us to kind of, it brought us to a point where we've needed to pursue eminent domain. As soon as we started to take that seriously, they started to take us seriously, and negotiations started to move forward, but they're only going to continue to take those negotiations seriously to the extent that we take eminent domain seriously. So I hope tonight that you will pass this resolution. The resolution itself is not to, you know, seize the properties tonight. The resolution tonight is to schedule a hearing that will happen on December 15th. At that hearing, a presentation is going to be made, similar to the presentation we made last Wednesday, going over all of the reasons why we need this property in order to close the landfill. If after that presentation, you don't feel like the city has made a proper showing, you can make a decision not to move forward with eminent domain, but now we need, at this point, we need to move that process forward, we need to keep the momentum going, because we need to acquire site control as quickly as possible. Ms. Kukosko said that we are pursuing things with the DEC, that we have an application going. That process is stalled until we have site control. We can do no, we can't do anything further with that until there's a clear path by which we can acquire title to these properties. And then, you know, finally, one of the things that Ms. Kukosko indicated was that the, these properties were being operated, were being used as a home, that these were the homes of the folks who owned it. The bulk of the properties are owned by a trust. They do not live there full-time. They, even they claim only to occupy the properties a few months, only a few months out of the year. This is ultimately a negotiation about the price of these properties. We're looking forward to receiving an appraisal from them, you know, which, after a year and a half, we probably should have received by now. But at the end of the day, we need the council's backing so that we can keep these negotiations going forward, we can make sure that we, that there is a Plan B in the form of eminent domain, and as that process is going forward, we're going to continue negotiating in good faith, and, you know, we look forward to your support as we do that. Thank you.
Does any council members have any questions? Mr. McGee? Mr. Howie?
Yeah, Mr. McGee, can you mention what you had mentioned in our executive session about the limitations?
Cannot do that if it's an executive session. Executive session is private.
Oh.
Well, I can, I can, I think I can answer in a way that wouldn't require executive session, but under the Constitution, the city is prohibited from making gifts to a private party, and that's why we simply can't pay what the property owners are asking at this point, which is five times the assessed value of the property. You know, we have an obligation to get, you know, we have an obligation to the taxpayers to get a fair price for these parcels, which is why we need your support.
That, my question was about the height restrictions of what can be built on that?
Oh, precisely, yeah, and that goes into the highest best use. I mean, the highest best use is going to factor in what you can legally do on the property. These properties are zoned residential, they're, you know, surrounded by a nature preserve. You simply cannot do the sort of high commercial development that would justify the sort of price that they're asking for.
Thank you. Mr. Baller?
Thank you. So I think for me, the biggest question is, you know, are these residents using it as their home? You know, and I know a lot of people, you know, especially as you get older, they may fly Florida during the winter and come back during the summer. So do we have any proof that this is not their primary? Are they using the star exemption? You know, do we have anything that says that this is not their primary home?
I can represent to you what's been represented to us, which is that it's not being occupied as their primary residence. I don't believe it could receive a star exemption because it's owned by a trust, it's owned by, it's not owned by an individual.
Thank you. Thank you. I think the most important part, this didn't happen in the last six months, this has been over a year and some change, so with that being said. Where were we? Okay. Considerations of ordinances. Moving on to ordinances held, Mr. Kimbrough.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 266123 as amended, and I ask for its passage.
Is there any discussion on the amendment of this ordinance? Is there any?
Just for the record, for the amendment, it was circulated by our staff, I want to say November 7th, but it said the amendment simply incorporated revised goal schedule and dual certification language is all the amendment was.
Is there any opposition to that amendment? Seeing none, passes. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you. So, thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 266123 and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter 48, Equal Opportunity Protections of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to expanding the scope of minority, minority and women-owned and controlled businesses.
Discussion on this ordinance. Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll? You want, okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Adams?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Zamer?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Fifteen in affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on to ordinance 2060, I guess this will be Mr. Conti. You do this for Ms. Romero?
No, I think it's, I don't know.
Who's going to do it? Mr. Ballerin? Mr. Conti? Which one?
I would say Mr. Conti should do it.
All right.
Mr. Conti?
First, I believe there's an amendment we need to amend it.
I don't have an amendment here. Doesn't say in my notes this amendment, just say. Is this amended?
Yeah. Yeah, because it, so I would move to adopt the amendments. The amendments are actually incorporate.
In the consideration.
The parking district, et cetera.
All right. Mr. Conti's made a motion to amend 2062.24. Is there any objections to this amendment? Seeing none? Motion passes. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 206224, originally sponsored by Councilmember Romero, ask its passage and a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Section 357-74, Establishments of a Residential Parking Permit System of Chapter 359 Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to modifying the boundaries of the Residential Parking Permit System.
Discussion on this. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this implements the additional residential parking permit slots that we actually got back in 2021. It's been a long process to be able to identify the locations and divvy up those spots, 750, so this allocates 750 additional permit parking spots. It also expands the boundary of the allowable permit zone from, I believe it was three-quarters of a mile radius from the Empire State Plaza to a mile and a quarter, I believe. So those were the two of the key provisions that were included in the state legislation that was adopted back in 2021. And this will benefit, I know, Park South, Washington Square, I believe Sherrod and Hollow, and some spots on Morris as well. So long-awaited expansion, and it takes effect February 15th, so it coordinates with when the existing permit system, the renewals and new applications come up, so it will phase right into the existing system. And I know, representing the Park South area, we've been waiting a long time to get something done in that area, and this addresses, in my area, Park South, some important areas. So I want to thank Mr. Ballerin for coordinating this, and I also want to thank Bill Trudeau from the Engineering Department, who's not here, he's off on vacation, I believe, who is always integral in issues like this, when it comes to streets and roads and trying to figure out traffic and things of that nature, so he's an important part of this process as well, and want to make sure he's acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baller? And then Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everyone who worked on this. This is a very long process. For those who don't remember, we started this back in like 2019 to get it passed at the state level, to get the additional spots and the additional expansions, I want to thank our state representatives who helped us back then, and I want all the staff who helped get this. Took a little bit, but I appreciate the conversations we had. You know, when we looked at the 750 additional spots, we really divvied them up with a lot of grace and respect for each other, so I really appreciate everyone that was part of the process. Of course, Mr. Bill Trudeau and his team, our team who helped put together the legislation, and of course, Mr. Conti who came back and gave us history and a lot of guidance through this process. So this is one I'm very excited to vote for, very long-awaited, and I'm glad it's here. It's going to affect my residents directly, and I'm glad we get to pass this today. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ballerin, because I remember when we first started on this, they shut you down a couple of times and left you hanging, but, you know, your perseverance and as well as Councilwoman Romero got this over, and that's really what this work is about, is when you know something is good and you keep fighting for it, so go fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Love?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Zamer?
Yes.
Fifteen in affirmative.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on with ordinances, Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to amend ordinance 25.101.25 to the version labeled 25.101.25, proposed amended November 17th, 2025, and to refer such ordinance to Albany County Planning Board for review at its December meeting, a copy of which has been provided to membership.
Is there any objections to that?
Yes.
Did he say the incorrect number?
24.
24, 10.25. Any objections to this amendment?
Mr. President?
Discussion, Mr. Howie?
Yes, I make a motion that we table this because this is very unusual how this was brought up. It was not brought up in committee, and actually, I temporarily feel that we should table this, so we have a chance to discuss it and understand exactly what's going on. Thank you. Oh, do I have a second for the motion?
Mr. Ballerin, second. All those in favor? All opposed?
No.
Nay.
Nay.
Take a voice vote, we'll take a roll call on the, the roll call vote is to table the amendment of ordinance 24101.25. That is what the vote is on right now. Whether to table this ordinance, can the clerk please read, table the amendment, sorry, not the ordinance, thank you, to table the amendment, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams?
No.
Anani? Ballerin?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
Conti?
No.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
No.
Frederick?
No.
Howie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
No.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Zamer?
No.
Six no, six yes, nine no.
Six yes, so amendment moves forward. Now we will have all those in.
The motion to table.
The motion to table, six yes and nine no.
The motion fails.
The motion fails to table. The motion fails to table. Now we will move on to the vote to amend the ordinance. All those in favor?
Can we speak on the?
Yes. Would you like discussion on the amendment?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you. Look, I can see the tea leaves, whether you like them or not, I'm not, I'm not blind, but I do think it's important for us to really look at this and say, are we really allowing individuals to have a say in this conversation? This was a conversation that we brought up, not because it was fun, not because it was easy, but because of the injustice and unfairness that we have seen in our city for centuries, because of the embarrassment of different documentaries that talked about two different cities. We didn't bring this up because it was easy. We didn't do this for two and a half years and have to do two veto overrides because it was fun. We did it because we felt it was the right thing to do in our guts, and that's why we did it. This bill did not have the opportunity to have those who are being impacted to have any say in it. It didn't have any public or any opportunity for the public to really put their two opinions on it. It changes the metric, that it even goes beyond what it was originally, and it's been said, but it's really important it gets repeated, going from 100% median income of the United States HUD is not the same as the median Albany. When we were at 60, that was the median Albany. I want to just remind my colleagues, the median means half of our population would benefit from this. Half. Half of our population would benefit. So I'm sharing that because it's important for us, as we have this conversation, is that by us allowing this amendment and us allowing it to go to the county, we are limiting the opportunity to have a conversation and a real discussion, a real honest discussion of what options we could put on the table. And would that mean that everybody would agree? No. Would that mean it'd be easy conversations? No. But at least we'd have everybody at the table and have those tough talks. I'm just going to go real quick, real quick. We're offering, this bill is offering a way out of inclusionary housing for $5,000 a unit. $5,000 a unit. We can do better than that. We criticize the administration for not fighting for tougher contracts with different vendors. Yeah, we can't push developers to do better than $5,000, one-time payment, for 100,000, a hundred thousand, for a hundred unit building, that'd be sixty-five thousand dollars. Sixty-five thousand. That's it. A one-time payment. Now, can we have a conversation about it? Let's have a conversation about it. Maybe we should make it an annual payment, maybe we should make it a biannual payment. But by not allowing it to go to the public, by not allowing it to go to committee, and just pushing this, and then they're gonna force us to come back after Christmas to try to pass this? So, all of us are gonna come back after Christmas, so we can give developers their nice tax breaks and ask them for sixty-five thousand dollars. Fact. That's not a good deal. That is not a good deal. So, look, I, it's been a long night, and you've heard from a lot of people who this affects, and, um, I think if your gut's telling you, if your gut's telling you, you don't feel good about this, vote your gut. Vote your gut, because your gut was right, and that's all you got. At the end of the day, that's all any of us have, is our guts. So, thank you.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Balleran. Even if you cared for repealing this, you should take exception with the way this came about. Mr. Balleran's been working on this for the last couple of years, and the council does actually have leadership. We found out about this this afternoon. This afternoon, a- after having a public safety meeting, it made its way to our staff, and we were told that this was going on. Maybe some of you knew from last night, because I understand Mr. Gallin was calling around. But also, based on the fact that we've set some date in the future to have this emergency meeting, council president obviously was a part of it too, so you must have known also. We, we had a leadership meeting yesterday.
Yeah, I asked you about it.
In which we, which we, we talked through. We had a leadership meeting.
I did ask.
With the mayor's folks a couple of days ago, none of this stuff got met. It's underhanded, and, and it's a bunch of bullshit, um, to say the least. But not only that, if we're gonna do this and give them the two years to adjust to this, just like the young man here said, this is just gonna get shifted to the renter. So, we may as well just completely repeal it and throw it out and go back to where we started, because thi- this isn't helpful, and the way this is going down is, is really problematic. I, I have a big problem with it, and I don't support it.
Mr. Adams?
Thank you. Um, a few things to say about this legislation. I think this conversation gets very convoluted and confusing, um, as we discuss housing, because it seems like there's one side focusing on the, overall, we're focused on affordability, but it seems one side is more focused on the lower end of the affordability and not understanding or paying attention to the actual, um, housing shortage that we are in, and how this is continuing on. First, let me start by saying that over this last two years, one, I remember very well much saying that this was not a good legislation, but we're gonna have hopes that it do the job that it's supposed to do in terms of our inclusionary housing. As we continue to move forward and had these conversations over the last year about inclusionary housing, about creating incentives or finding other ways, there has been none. There has not been any other legislation been brought forward to try to address this problem. So, I can understand why members may feel like this is a short notice, or how things played out. You're entitled to feel your way. But this is a solution to a problem, and this solution is a solution that is actually a viable solution for many different reasons. One, we have to address that fact that if you look and read through the legislation, it addresses the concerns that were brought up by many people that came in here to speak today in regards to homelessness, in regards to a housing trust fund, in regards to rental assistance, in regards to a few other things. This is money that can go towards all these different types of housing concerns and still address our current, um, inclusionary zoning. One of the biggest determinants from this is the fact that within the last two years, we have seen the reduction in housing development. With the reduction of housing development, there's also been a reduction of those affordable units, um, based off the legislation. So, we're still losing housing, we're losing market rate housing, and now we're losing afford, low affordable housing. But that is not just a problem that the city of Albany faces. We have a problem for regular people who make that seventy, eighty thousand dollars, who are looking for places to live, who want to stay and live in the city of Albany, but are being subjected to the current existing housing with nowhere to go, who are also being subjected to, like myself and others, to increases in rent because of the low supply. So, this is a wider issue that I think and believe that needs to be separated and dealt with in separate entities. But with this legislation tonight, I think, and I support it, because again, this is money that, this is something we can do right now, and we can still have conversations about other ways to improve our housing situation, but at least we're making tangible movements. We're making progress towards something and not just still sitting here hoping that this current legislation as it stands does something eventually. We're wasting time, we need action now. If it's a small solution, we need to utilize that solution and build off of it. So, um, I had a lot more to say that was more based on facts, but I will relinquish my time, so we can move forward with this meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I understand my colleagues and the public when they say that, you know, there can be more discussion around, uh, even the numbers around the topic of this amended amendment. And understand, and understandably, this amendment doesn't solve everything, but I believe that it's a floor that we can stand on and not a ceiling that we are confined to. Uh, and it's a foundation that finally gives us something that we can build on. And here's what this amendment does. It finally ends the pattern where developments can grow in Albany without giving anything back to Albany. And so, you know, from the way this legislation is written, um, it can expand funding and access to funding in our most vulnerable communities. It can open new pathways to homeownership, and I know that, you know, as, uh, the councilman and one of, uh, the most historically disinvested wards, a lot of people in my district, they wanna own their own, ha, own homes, but they have no pathway to ownership, or they have no access to funding to get the pathway to ownership. And this is how we end with these absentee landlords who come and buy up all the property, and, um, they don't invest anything back into, um, into the city. And so, it also can support families in building generational wealth, especially neighborhoods harmed by redlining and historical neglect. And for a district like mine, um, who I have a lot of two-story and three-story homes, not just single-family homes, um, this will help out our families greatly. It can provide more funding and access to emergency repair dollars for our seniors and our longtime homeowners, um, and working families who desperately need to keep, um, their homes up to date and to keep their homes stay safe. It also strengthens, it strengthens our hous, strengthens housing stability programs, okay, to prevent displacement and keep resident rooted in their communities. And, uh, Councilman Johnson, you mentioned earlier about emergency rental assistance, which is so many people need, and so I think this is a way that we can begin to address, um, that problem. Again, this amendment doesn't claim to solve every problem, but it creates a new stream of resources, a new level of accountability, and a new expectation that if you build in Albany, you invest in Albany. Thank you.
Mr. Conti?
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I mean, we've had a lot of discussion on the merits or demerits of the amendment, but at its heart, what's before is now really, it's a procedural motion to amend, uh, Mr., Mr. Clark's already introduced legislation, uh, to refine the proposal, you might say, and to put it in the public domain, so that the public officially has now an alternate proposal that they can look at and comment on. It does not take it out of committee, the committee process still is there. Um, and, you know, respecting the right of the, uh, the, the sponsor to make an amendment to more accurately reflect proposal that he's putting forth, that's what's really before us right now. And from that perspective, I don't see an obje, I think we, we need to focus on that in terms of, uh, the, the procedural aspect of this motion, uh, which will then allow us, in a more transparent way, to have a discussion on the merits of the proposal and alternatives. So, from that perspective, I, I certainly support the motion.
Pharaoh?
Thank you, Mr. President. Housing is one of the most important topics that we deal with, and it's also one of the most complicated topics. The original inclusionary zoning amendment was something that Councilmember, Councilmember Balleran spent well over a year, if not even two years, on, working with the administration, worth, working with departments before we as a body passed it. And we, in fact, passed it twice, exactly in the same way. The first time we passed it, we didn't really get any pushback at all. The mayor did veto it, but we really didn't hear anything about it. We had a mix-up with the county, so we had to pass the exact same thing again. In that interim, the Fed changed the interest rates, and suddenly it went from something that wasn't that big of a deal to something that was like the sky is falling. And then it suddenly went from this, you know, something that, whatever, to a terrible thing. Right after it happened, I said to the mayor, I said to the administration, and I've said it several times over and over again, if this is something that is truly this terrible, let's go through a process. We have a housing crisis in the city for every level. We need to go through a process anyway to discuss it. The best way to do legislation, it is what I do all day, every day, is to go through a process. That is the best way to carve out policy. You bring people together from all different points of view, you bring them together, you talk about it, you go through a process, and then you identify policies that need to change, including the inclusionary zoning. We do not, none of us are housing experts. Bringing the experts together to talk about things would have been the right choice. I offered over and over again, there was no interest from the administration to go through that process at all. Now, we're here, and this was completely done behind closed doors. We go through a process, we are a process body, and this is not the right way to operate. It's just not. I'm, again, and Councilmember Balleran talked about getting gray hair. Truthfully, I'll dye my hair if I get more gray hair, but I'm happy to go through the process again, um, and I'm happy to offer it. I think that it is entirely possible that we might end up with something similar to this. I don't know. But what I do know is that we did not bring housing experts around the table to talk about solving the problem, to really look at the issues. We didn't bring developers around the table to do this. We, somebody came up with an idea behind closed doors and pu, and is pushing it through to try to do it before the end of the year. It's not the way we operate, and it's not the right way to do things, and it's not the right way to find a solution to this very delicate, very important issue.
John?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just find it, um, interesting. I, I sat through many meetings with the South End Collaborative, and the one nugget that I took out of there was, uh, Inclusionary Housing Fund. And we spoke about that, you know, two years ago. I know I, I, I came, I've met, tried to meet with, um, Dan McCoy about it, right? And for it to go blank, and, and you never hear anything about it, and it snuck in. But I've been saying, we've been bullied by the coroner office for my eight years in here. We've, um, time and time again, they come in here at the eleventh hour, and, um, I just, um, there's opportunity. I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm gonna touch on it in miscellaneous, but when I look over there, you know, I see a person that is not gonna get stuck on her own vision or their own vision, and, um, just fight it. You know, uh, ever since we passed that, it's just, we've been attacked in, um, in, in the media by the coroner office. And, uh, it was never, ever opportunity for, I think it was a big opportunity for leadership to be shown. You, you have to, um, be able to lead people that don't see what you see, and, and not just getting a tug of war and then at the last minute. And I think, I'm thankful for whoever, um, made the connection to the two hundred and forty million dollars that's coming this way. I can't imagine money being out there and developers not wanting to, um, be a part of that, um, money. So, to change it just before this money hits is kinda pointless, uh, because they're coming, they're coming, they want, they want some of that, um, four hundred million, two hundred and forty million, whatever it is. So, I thank that person for bringing that up, because that, um, uh, I believe is a connection to the urgency that we are feeling. And once again, um, is, is always in favor of the developer, the contractors, never in favor of the city. And when we talking about, um, opportunities for us to show the city that we have their back, this is an opportunity, because the money is coming, and, 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 um, they, they're gonna follow the money. It's just, it's plain and simple. So, to cave in now, I, I don't, I don't agree with it. I respect, um, the councilman's, um, expertise, because he knows a lot more than I do, but I just know timing. And this timing, it just doesn't feel right. So, thank you again for, um, time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to clear up a couple of things. Back, I think it was February, Councilmember Anani introduced the ADU units. We talked about that. When did we pass it? It was like early October, I believe. So, we, we discussed it. I was against it. It passed, but there was discussion. There was a chance for people to come in and talk about it. Neighborhoods talked about it, neighborhood meetings, I was invited to a lot of them. We talked about it, okay? And to say that there was no legislation, that is, that was for housing legislation, for Councilman Adams, saying that we haven't passed anything. The ADU, we did pass, so that went through. For Councilman Conti, are you gonna guarantee a staying committee, or is he gonna get discharged and voted? What I heard is they're gonna try to have a meeting Christmas week, that we're gonna have to come in to get this done by the end of the year. So, how do you keep it from getting discharged from committee and not discussed in committee? I don't know. I mean, that's, that's what I heard. And my little editorial, the CPRB's been minus members for almost three years now. Where was the rush? Where was the administration saying, we need to get people on this board? So, we have three people resign, now we don't have a majority, now we're all over the news. I wish the same type of impetus was put on that as put on this legislation that being thrown down our throats. Thank you.
Thank you. And, for councilmembers, it's an amendment to the legislation. Legislation is still in place, it's just an amended version of the legislation. It's not being thrown out. So, Mr. Clark, since he is the sponsor of this amendment, he will speak, and after that, no other councilmembers will be allowed to speak, and then we'll vote on this amendment. Ms. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just from a process standpoint, I did not support the original legislation when it was adopted.
That's true.
Also, didn't, um, support the override of the mayor's veto. Um, you know, it is coming to the end of my term, it's not, um, something that, you know, did introduce a full repeal earlier, has not been discussed in committee, it's a busy time of year. But I do think that instead of just a full repeal, that the exceptions that we've built into this proposal, especially with the payments that can be made into, uh, housing-related funds, is an important compromise here compared to just a full repeal. And, uh, also just like to note that, you know, the rush is, uh, the Albany County planning, uh, agenda as well, that's why this had to, to go today. Uh, so I do appreciate any support to allow this discussion to continue during this session. I'd invite a committee meeting to discuss this amended legislation prior to any special meeting, and, um, you know, if there are additional changes, such as, uh, the amount that would be required to be paid, uh, that can still be changed even after the Albany County Planning referral, uh, decision is made. So, uh, let's continue to have the discussion, and I hope that my colleagues will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk, uh, call the roll on this amendment version?
Adams.
Yes.
Anani.
No.
Balleran.
No.
Clark.
Yes.
Conti.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
No.
Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick.
Yes.
Howie.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough?
No.
Love?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Zamer?
Yes.
Nine in affirmative?
Six no.
Amendment passes. Moving on to Mr. Kimbrough. It's all for ordinances. I said it's all for ordinances, Mr. Kimbrough?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. The rest of the ordinance is on the agenda, held.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolution. Resolutions, we did introduce already. So, resolutions held. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed resolution ninety-seven, ninety-one, twenty-five R and asks for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council honoring the contributions of Maggie Manchinnelli Cahill to the city of Albany and renaming a portion of North Pearl Street in her honor.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Anani?
Yes.
Baller?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Zamer?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fifteen in affirmative?
Resolution passes. Continue on, the resolution's held. Mr. Baller?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we move forward to resolution one-one-one dot ninety-two dot twenty-five R.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Dennis Lee Adne and renaming a portion of Washington Ave. in his honor.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, Mr. Baller? No? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Anani?
Yes.
Baller?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Howie?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Zamer?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Fifteen in affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough? You wanted to be recognized?
Oh, yes. I'd like to make a motion to remove resolution one-twenty-one, one-on-one, twenty-five from the table to untable it, so we can vote on it.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Hyde?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend resolution one-twenty-one, one-on-one, twenty-five R to change the hearing date to December fifteenth.
That's an amended? Okay. Is there an objection to that amendment? Seeing none, amendment, motion passes. Mr. Hyde?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to ask for a roll call vote on resolution one-twenty-one, one-on-one, twenty-five R.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council authorizing a public hearing regarding acquisition by eminent domain of five-oh-two, five-oh-four, five-oh-six rap road north for construction of a solid waste transfer station.
Discussion on this resolution. Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Anani?
Yes.
Baller?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Keegan?
Yes.
Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Zamer?
Yes.
Thirteen in affirmative, two no.
Resolution passes. Continue on, resolution's held. Ms. Frederick?
Thank you. I noticed resolution one-twenty-eight, one-eleven, twenty-five R and asks for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the common council reappointing Francis A. Cosgrove as a member of the Board of Assessment Review.
Is there a discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Anani? Baller?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Howie?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Love?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Zamer?
Yes.
Fifteen in affirmative?
Resolution passes. Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe the rest of the resolutions on the agenda are held.
Thank you, and I'll recognize Ms. Love. Miscellaneous, Ms. Love? Go ahead.
I've been sitting so long, I need to stand up. I just wanna thank everybody who participated in our coat drive with Councilman Robinson and myself. This year was our eighth coat drive, and each year it get bigger and bigger. And each year, I need more and more coats. So, in saying that, I'm gonna meet some of my colleagues down the lodges this week to pick up some coats for some kids that's still in need. I ask, and I'm gonna call you out.
I got you.
Mr. Flynn? Mr. Ellis?
I got you.
President Ellis?
I was not here Saturday, but I got you.
I got you back.
There you go. I got you too.
Mr. Sergio?
I got you.
Okay, I rest my case. Good night.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Anani.
Mr. Johnson?
I got them in my house, Joyce.
Johnson?
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on real quickly. First, I wanted to recognize our next mayor, and you sent me a clear picture of what you are gonna represent as our mayor by being here through the whole meeting. I don't think that we have, I have saw that in the last eight years. So, I thank you for your patience with us tonight and your presence. But I also wanted to touch real quickly what the mayor said about providing raises. How we got to there wasn't as simple as that. I remember, if I'm correctly, the first, only people that were getting raises were people in her office at one time. And they were hidden in the budget, and I never say a name. Frank, what's his name that ran for mayor?
Commisso?
Yeah, Commisso. I believe he was the one that found it. I believe he's an accountant. I just remember the report in the paper, and people made a lot of noise about it. So, you know, to sit there and take credit like that, I think, wasn't right. Also, I spoke about the inclusionary housing, but I think it's opportunities for us to get to where we need to get, and we just can't have people that have closed-minded leadership. And so, I'm gonna say, this has been a long night. Thank you for hearing me out, and good night, everyone.
Mr. Baller?
I'm gonna be quick. This was a long night, we've had lots of long nights, and I just wanna let you guys know, look, we disagree, this is government, it's never fun, it's never pleasant, but next week, enjoy your time with your family, have a Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Clark?
Just quickly with the comments from legislator Carolyn McLaughlin, I think we do need to look at ways to at least project why these speed cameras are important and not just speed traps. I have a lot of constituents that are changing their routes around the city, just like that was commented tonight. So, I don't know if it's better signage, better everything else, but we need to do